Call to order, the regular city council meeting for August 13th, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the rule call show that Councilmember Walton, she texted me saying she may be late, so is not here. We will move on to the approval of the minutes from July 23rd, 2018. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Okay, Lisa, on the first page, it shows those that were present, needs to reflect that I was present.
I'm sorry.
And on the second page, second paragraph, the woman from Colonial Acres who was here with her granddaughter, her name is Judy Keeling, K-E-L-I-N-G, and that is her granddaughter, Ava Marie. And that's all I have.
With respect to the second to last motion, CM 7618, so this is action after the closed session regarding the purchase or lease of real property. I would suggest that council entertain modifying or revising the motion to direct Attorney Wilhelm to take action regarding the purchase or lease of property according to discussion held in closed session.
This is exactly what it says in here.
Well, it doesn't pertain, well, I guess, no, it doesn't reference purchase or lease of real property.
Oh, I see.
Thanks, Tim. Anyone else with anything for the minutes?
I'll move the minutes.
As amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Moving forward to the attorney bills.
I'll move the bills.
Did you say yes, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, I'll support then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of this evening's agenda?
I move the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. At this point, we are going to open up for public comment. I'm going to briefly read the new rules to remind everyone. Rules of conduct for public comment at the council meetings. Members of the public may speak at a council meeting upon recognition by the mayor. Public comment may only occur during periods designated on the agenda for public comment or a public hearing. A person may speak for up to two minutes during each of the two public comment periods on agenda items or non-agenda items. Waivers of the time requirement may only be granted in the discretion of the mayor, and waivers to speak at a time other than the designated comment period may only be granted by council. Any person wishing to make a presentation longer than two minutes or requiring audio-visual equipment is asked to contact the city clerk requesting to appear on a future agenda. A person may only address council from the podium. Only one person may occupy the podium at a time. All remarks are to be directed to the mayor and council. Speakers are not to engage in direct dialogue with other meeting attendees. Any person who violates the rules of conduct, disturbs the peace at the meeting, and/or interferes with the meeting may be warned, ordered to be seated, removed, and/or ticketed. This summarizes Council Resolution 04-18. Complete rules including guidelines for considering waivers are available in the council chambers and from the city clerk. Thank you. And at this point, if we have anyone here for public comment, please be sure to state your name and address.
Doug Cook, 25701 McCrory Lane, South Lion. We're from the Lake Street Cruisin' Motor Fest, and what I wanted to do is publicly thank, so this can get out over the video and, you know, rather than doing it on social media and stuff like that, wanted to thank the mayor, city council, wanted to thank Chief Collins and Chief Vogel, the entire staff of South Lion DPW, Bob Donahue and the Downtown Development Authority, First Presbyterian Church, because they were a big part of our motor fest that we had here a couple of weeks ago, and to our team, a lot of them probably won't see this on cable, but we, including ourselves, had over 30 volunteers that helped us put that show on. And just some interesting notes, we had nearly 350 vehicles, we had great crowds, positive comments. Food trucks did very well, the barbecue fell off, sold out about 1:00. And the restaurants and businesses that we've talked to reported a lot of foot traffic in their buildings and that. So just want to say thank you for being a great partner and helping us. Just to let you know, too, that we'll be back early in the year because July 27th, 2019, will be our next second annual motor fest. And we have two remaining Wednesday night shows, 22nd of August and September 26th. So I just want to extend our thanks to you, made it very easy to work with all the departments, and it helped us to put off a great show. And Mother Nature gets a little nod in there, too. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Sharkey Sidelko, I live at 62512 Raleigh Court in Colonial Acres. My question is, would it be feasible or possible for the city to purchase some paint and paint that green eyesore in the heart of our downtown? You have two buildings in that same block spending a considerable amount of money doing a facelift, another building or two over on Lake Street doing the same thing. I understand you don't own the building, but the owner has shirked his responsibility by letting it get into the condition that it is. And I think possibly if it could be painted, just a coat of paint, maybe a nice cream color or a light yellow, or possibly the same green that it is now, but clean, maybe somebody would be more interested in renting it. I have friends that come on a regular basis to have lunch, and part of the afternoon is always to go to Coral Sash and Grand Trunk. And as we walk from one building to the other, every time, they say to me, "Didn't they do anything about this building yet?" I say, "No." I really strongly feel now that it is the city's responsibility to repair this eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Margaret Bonitis, and my address is 62290 Arlington Circle. And I have a petition here with 42 signatures of people who don't want that property developed. And many people feel very strongly about it. And I feel very strongly about the wildlife there. There's a lot of wildlife living in there, and I'm sure the builders don't care, but, you know, if they build there, that's what's going to happen to the birds and the bees and the butterflies and the deer and the bunnies and what all. And another thing concerns me is something about exit from Colonial Acres or entrance from Colonial Acres, I'm not sure which. And that's about it. I'd like to know about that.
Well, thank you. We are going to, that will definitely be discussed tonight on the agenda, I promise. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Bonnie Campbell, I live at 62310 Arlington Circle. And I'm here tonight to share some thoughts and concern regarding the proposed housing development, which will back up to Colonial Acres, specifically the northwest corner. Colonial Acres, the Phase 5, consists of 467 units. Phase 1 through 4, 377 units, making a total of 844 units for senior citizens. Building 50 to 60 family homes in a corner of an over 55 community containing 844 senior condos just doesn't seem like a good fit for the neighborhood. Assuming the housing development goes forward, approximately 50 or 60 of the units of the Colonial Acres units will back up directly to the backyards of the homes. My building sits at the, is building 120, and it's at the back of Arlington Circle, and they're all walkouts, which means not only will our Florida rooms or our three-season rooms in our back patios, but up against it, but also my bedroom windows are going to look directly, and the people in my specific building are going to look directly into their yards because they're walkouts, so they're higher. Most of us in Colonial Acres moved from subdivisions where we shared for years backyards with trampolines and swing sets and playscapes, and often people who tied their dogs outside for hours at a time, and they barked. That's, none of that is allowed, of course, in Colonial Acres. And we chose to move to Colonial Acres because we wanted to live out our senior years in a quiet community of our peers.
Ms. Campbell, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If I could just allow you to quickly just wrap it up?
Yep, I only have about five more sentences.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. This housing development is going to significantly change the flavor of our community. Lastly, we're curious and a little bit concerned about the plan for a barrier between the properties. I hope you'll take my thoughts and concerns into account, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? Okay, thank you. Mr. Donahue, and our downtown discussion?
I know you've got a big night ahead of you, I'll keep it brief. Have a meeting tomorrow with four building owners to pick out their colors for the Victorian paint schemes, so we're really excited, and they hope to have that done by the end of September. The new business directory, a draft is being circulated, and we're going to do our darndest to have what amounted to five errors before fixed, including Ms. Kurzweil's, which is the omission of a phone number. So we're going to have that new addition out soon. I put on your desk a copy of the holiday gift guide advertising piece that we're putting together, and I think we'll have a minimum, we might have the luxury of having to expand it, we've had a lot of interest. The last thing is that attached to your report is a copy of the new downtown and citywide events calendar. It's something that, for the first time, we have it digitally, and it's, will be placed on the city's website. And I think it'll address some questions that have come up in the past two weeks about notice of the motor fest and other events, so I think it's a timely piece that now in a digital format can be used, and also handed out to all the businesses, hand-delivered, emailed. I will personally make sure that either they get it emailed or hand-delivered.
Thank you, Bob.
So, that is all I have, unless you have any questions.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to, again, address the issue of the Bonner Building. It came up again tonight with a great activist in our city, Carol. I just think that when you have residents that are stepping forward and they're noticing the same things that we've been noticing, I think that, I don't know how much louder we can ring the bell. Where are we on enforcement on those buildings? And is there a willingness to explore the idea with the Bonner Building? Owners, that we go in, I'm sure we can get a lot of volunteers, I would be one of them to put a new coat of paint on that building if they would allow it.
Well, the update is that I met, I mentioned this before, I met in a very informal fashion with the representative of the family estate and their Realtor about two months ago, and I talked to Lloyd, and we were ready to go to our first formal step, that's the same step we're taking with all five buildings that we identified last January. So our first formal step is that the building department invites people in to the building, along with any representative that they would choose. Usually it's their Realtor, their attorney, or anyone. The city staff that are present for those meetings is our city attorney, myself, the building official, our planner, and our zoning administrator. So just short of that, I got a phone call to go to Northville to meet with them, again, this was about two months ago, and at that meeting, they said that they requested 30 days to get it listed by Realtor, and that would we not meet first formal step until they had it listed and could test the real estate market. Well, that's been at least four weeks, and they never did officially list it, although word of mouth, they asked me for people that were interested, and I sent them about five or six people. I know that they've received four offers. They're all, all the offers are, well, I take that back, two offers were less than the appraised value. Two offers were more than the appraised value. So they did not live up to their conditions, the agreement we had that they would list it within 30 days. So I came back, and I discussed it with Lloyd and Tim, and our next step, we will probably in the next two weeks have the building department formally notify the owners, and we will have that first formal face-to-face meeting. And from there, we require that they, based on that meeting, we require that they follow all the requirements and the maintenance ordinance that the city enacted. I think anything else, maybe Tim might have something else.
Go ahead, follow up.
May I continue, Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, now that I have more information, I'm even more upset because I agree with you, it was my understanding that those properties were listed, so if they're not listed, that tells me that now what they want to do is sell it at a price that the market is not going to accept because of the condition of the interior of the property. They don't want to pay a listing fee, they don't want to pay a real estate agent, so what they really want to do is walk out of here with tons of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars in their pocket, while we sit here in the city of South Lion and ask our other property owners to invest in their facades and change their painting and go, and suggest that they improve their property, and this guy just wants to walk out of here with nothing but cash in his pocket without doing anything, anything, to improve his real estate. Anything, nothing, nothing.
I agree with you 100%.
So that meeting should be tomorrow.
I agree.
It should be tomorrow. And you know what? If somebody wants to buy the property, they buy it with the conditions, and he had an opportunity to come in and fix that property, and he can't say that it is torturous interference with the contract, because you were provided with opportunity. If there's nothing in writing, do it now before there's a contract, so you don't have to worry about those issues. I'm livid, I'm just livid about it.
I will add that I hear almost daily comments, and it's very frustrating, I will tell you. And so I think we are on a track, and again, we're treating all five buildings equally, and we will definitely, the next step, as soon as we can, have that formal meeting in City Hall.
Thank you so much for your commitment.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Councilmember Presian?
I have two things for you, Bob. I do want to echo the same concerns, I completely understand where you're coming from. I just received a phone call yesterday regarding that same property, and the sooner the better that we can address it. So, and thank you for taking the time to mention it as well. My second concern is about the calendar, I think it looks great, I think it's a great way to get the businesses involved if they're not already aware of what's going on in the city. However, the biggest mode of communication nowadays is Facebook, everyone gets their info from Facebook. So as much as our website looks fantastic, I think we need to post this on Facebook as well.
We also, that's a very clinical, basic list. The DDA has discussed a small brochure.
That'll be great.
So we can have pictures and, you know, have it more lively, but that's a basic minimum list that we'll start out with.
I think the more information we can get out there, the better, so thank you for your efforts.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Donahue? Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
I just, I wanted to ask Lisa.
Go ahead.
Lisa, could you please note that I entered the chamber at 7:45? Thank you.
This time, we'll move on to old business number one. Consider the approval of first reading of ordinance rezoning parcel 21-19-126-002 Thomasville from RM-1 Multiple Family Residential to PD Plan Development. Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
Well, this thing's been here and back a number of times. I know that there's an awful lot of opposition from people in Colonial Acres, and I'm appreciative of your concerns. Unfortunately, the only great way to really accomplish what you're hoping to do is if you guys pull your money together, buy that property, and then you can do or not do whatever you'd like with it. But the people that own that property have the right to develop that property and things that are legally appropriate for the property. Our chore now is to try to come to a consensus on what is a good fit and a good neighbor for you, so, because we can't simply tell them you can't do anything with your property. So now it's a matter of trying to match up the fact of what's allowable and what is commensurate with being a good neighbor for you guys. I have been against the layout of this whole thing since we initially started talking about it, I just think that the densities are substantially too high, I mean, it breaks virtually, what, eight, eight or nine of the tenants of what we typically would do with lot coverage, lot size, density, the whole gamut is just thrown out the window to allow them to develop there, and it's, this is being proposed to be as a planned development. This is going to be the third, if I'm not mistaken, Carmen, isn't this the third planned development that we've had with Gateway, Knowles, and now this?
Yeah, we've had several that we've looked at, not all of them have gone through to final approval.
Right, okay.
But this is, I think, the third one.
Yeah. So the only one that was actually an appropriate, in my view, planned development was Gateway, because we had mixed uses and things, there was commercial, residential, and office in there, and that was a great fit. We were able to accomplish attending to a number of the needs that the community was looking for by allowing that type of development to take place. Knowles, I was, happened to attend just as a guest at the planning commission meeting last Thursday, and they're still tangled up with some of the things of what that PD had kind of transitioned to, these problems that show up downstream. So now we've got, and it's a beautiful development, but unfortunately, by accomplishing a little walking path around the water retention area there, we ended up allowing them to put in lots that couldn't account for putting a house on it and all the amenities of a modern-day life, a deck and, you know, a pool in the back and all that kind of stuff, they don't meet the limit on lot coverage. So now we're retailing the language of our ordinance to accommodate through the city. It started off with Knowles, and now it's going, transitioning through the city itself to change the percentages. I, I'm not averse to the idea of us recognizing if we're not in keeping with the pace of the world, you know, I mean, if we can make some minor tweaks and allow people the things that they're looking for, and it's not a big encroachment on their neighbors, I think that we should entertain a discussion at the very least. This flies in the face of so many things that are typical applications on how a development is conducted, I don't see how I could possibly entertain the idea of supporting this. So I'm, I don't know what the answer is, but I know that, for me at least, this isn't even close, so.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So, Carmine, I appreciate the fact that when we last discussed this about a month ago, we talked about some of the inconsistencies in the package, we talked about, you know, some of the descriptions that didn't match throughout, and some of the numbers that were incorrect and so forth. So I appreciate the fact that you took this back, and working with the developer, working with the city, corrected a lot of that, provided a lot of documentation to see this time. So what I would like to do is just talk about some of the things that have come back and been added to this plan, if I could, and please correct me if I'm incorrect in anything that I say here. So, one of the things that's been added to this plan is along the border with Colonial Acres, the builder is going to install a six-foot vinyl privacy fence, and on their side will also have staggered evergreens as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that goes to the point, and I don't recall the name of the road, the main road that comes into the development, I don't remember what that is offhand. Lexington?
Yeah.
Okay. Lexington does not connect to Colonial Acres.
Correct.
Okay. It is not a throughway, cars will not pass from that development into Colonial Acres.
Correct.
And right now, without changing the zoning, this piece of property is eligible to build 330 apartments or something?
Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but yes, it's zoned for multiple family residential and apartments.
Okay, so instead of 50 houses, could have 330 apartment, apartments, in however many buildings that represents. I just wanted to provide that to the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Presian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carmine, I have a couple of quick questions for you. Do you happen to know off the top of your head how many people were present at the public hearing for the planning commission?
This last?
The June 18th.
I don't know, I'd have to look at the record, I don't know, I didn't attend that one, do you know, Tim?
I believe, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Tim.
I believe the council packet contains a copy of the June 14, 2018 planning commission minutes. That would not reflect the number of people in attendance, but it would reflect any public comments made at that time.
I only saw one.
Two, yeah.
Mm-hmm. There was one individual. I just want to make it clear for the record, so everyone knows, so just confirming there is one individual who showed up for that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had was in regards to preserving the wildlife. Can you just, again, just for the record, so everyone can understand and have a full, eyes-wide-open approach to this, what is specifically being done to preserve any wildlife, all the wildlife that's there?
Yeah, well, the one item that was being retained is the area around the pond, including the pond, it's not going to be disturbed, and throughout even the previous version of this, that was always the item that was going to be saved. Beyond that, that's, that was it.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So again, the other thing is, we talk about this providing for the 50 units moderately-priced new housing, do we have a price range that the builder is looking at for this new development?
Yeah, the, I think the applicant would have to answer that one, because they're different units than we originally reviewed.
I just was looking for the range, I didn't know if you had that information.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, they look larger than the original plan that we had reviewed. If I could, too, the thing to keep in mind is that the whole intent behind this development when we first met with the original developer was to have, have it targeted towards empty nesters, primarily, you know, recent retirees, which is what Lexington Oaks exclusively was purchased by, for some of the reasons mentioned, less impact, less people, less vehicles, less kids, less whatever. And so that was the goal behind this, was to create another community to help fill that void. We've got, you know, single-family, large lot, single-family being, you know, built, not necessarily just in the city, but throughout the area.
not necessarily just in the city, but throughout the area, you know, surrounding the city. And there just appear to be a need for more of this type of housing for, you know, people to move out of the big houses and into the smaller units. I mean, that was the intent behind it versus its own multiple-family residential versus having apartment buildings go in there, larger apartment buildings, that wouldn't necessarily be age restricted, which was the original intent, but it never worked its way into the, the deed or whatever, you know, mechanism they would have had. So that was the original intent behind, you know, this project. That's, that's the, that was the intent. You know, obviously, they're coming in for less units now in slightly larger houses, but, you know, price point, who they're targeting, that sort of thing, I think the applicant would have to, to, because, but, so what happens is the larger the lot and the larger the home, the more likely you're going to get families with children and that sort of thing. The smaller the lot and the smaller the home, the more likely you are to get empty nesters and folks who are looking to downsize. There's no, you know, excluding that, but as I indicated, you know, from Lexington Oaks, every single house in that development was purchased by an empty nester on the older end of the age group, not the younger, exclusively, the full sell-through. I spoke to the developer about that, and that's what they indicated. So, that was, that was our intent, okay? That was the intent behind all of this from day one.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Is there a chance that we could negotiate having a homeowners' association or something that would disallow outside amenities taking place? The deck and all the things that, you know, whether it's through ZBA or whoever tend up, you know, having a parade of, of things that need to be, that put the city in the middle of, once they've put the development in, and now we're getting kind of jammed up by all the activity that's going to want to be conducted afterward? Because they don't have any, they can't meet any of the proportion footprints.
Yeah, my, my guess is, and now you're getting into the legal realm, and Tim, to answer that, my guess is there are probably some things that, you know, maybe you could, the developer and, you know, builder would agree to not put in, that might be, you know, attractive to, you know, creating a lot of activity, like maybe no permanent basketball hoops or whatever in the driveway, that sort of thing. But I think when you start talking about things like patios, because everybody wants at least a patio or a deck they can go out onto, nothing massive.
I don't have a problem with them having a patio. My concern is that they won't have, they won't be able to meet the criterion for lot space, lot coverage. So, so then we end up giving away the store in the beginning, and then we give away the store at the end, what's left. So, that's what I'd like to see us try to avoid.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. I think that's something that we would have to nail down, in particular, through the, when they go for actual site plan review, when we start looking at the details. I think they would have to provide us what, I think we want to see for every unit, what the deck or patio potential is for each property, and they should be sharing that with the applicant, so we don't run into the issues that we're running into, and, and not just the newer developments, some of the, you know, some of the other developments that, you know, the one through, you know, through consent judgment and others, where we've got big houses that were built on smaller lots.
Right.
But you're absolutely correct.
I mean, I'd like to see a sign in the sales office that says, "You need to understand, you will not be able to build a deck," so...
Yeah, beyond a certain size, patio or deck, yes. On this lot. So when you purchase this lot, you need to know that those are the conditions.
Right.
Absolutely.
I guess I need to say...
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the benefit of council and for the city attorney, is, I'm raising a conflict of interest on this matter, because I've represented Colonial Acres in the past, and my attorney has suggested that for a period of three years, I stay away from any issue related to Colonial Acres. If you remove recommendation I, which is inclusion of language for future cross-access agreement with Colonial Acres via Lexington Drive, then that would probably take away the conflict. But as long as that is becoming a requirement, a recommendation or a condition to the development, which is this future cross-access with Colonial Acres, I need to decline comment on this file. So, thank you. Like the minutes to reflect it. My voting, when I don't vote, it's due to conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kurtswell. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carmine, Mr. Cavallari is the developer in this, he's not here tonight, right?
Yes, he is here.
He is here?
Yes, he's here.
Okay. Well, okay, this property's bounced around like a ping pong ball in a mixing bowl, we all know it. Mr. Cavallari, I just want to compliment you on one thing before I go into what I owe to the people of this town. I have to give you maximum credit where it's due for the marvelous site plan that you have created, okay, that we all reviewed. There were details and features in that site plan that I've never seen detailed in the way it was in other site plans I have looked at, and I thought it was remarkable, okay? And even though it's small for me, I gotta use this magnifying glass, it's worth it, okay? It was, it's a tremendous job. Unfortunately, you have not developed your concept with regard to the bigger picture of what the city really needs in this rather obscure location. And I'm for bill, I'm for developing the property, okay? It should be developed, okay? No question about it. Are you going to let, let a triangle sit there forever and, and draw bees and ants? Okay. But, okay, they had the perfect zoning to start with in this deal. Okay, they had the ghosts that laid the golden egg right in front of them, okay? But that wasn't good enough. They gotta roll the dice with this plan development to try to cram more units into a smaller bag of potatoes, okay, is what it amounts to, okay? You had a situation you couldn't lose, and you got a situation now that everybody can lose, okay? I'll make this short, okay? If we deny their request, okay, to transform this down tonight, we are actually giving you a great service and saving you from great misfortune and disappointment in the future, although you probably won't see it at this time. Eventually, I'm sure you will come to see the inevitability of failure of this project. Okay. What I see in this project is a reflection of a miniature trailer park, in a way, in an obscure location, okay? You've got three different types of units, Daltons, Hamptons, and Newtons, and the smallest one's smaller than the cheese box I live in, but I've got a huge yard, cement driveway and a full basement. These, these buildings have no basement, no yard, they do have a little upstairs, no view of anything, really. The largest units are smaller than the average double-wide over in South Lion Woods, okay? If you, if you check it out closely, okay? Now, is that, is that modern, is that the wave of the future, modern living? I, I don't think so, okay? If we denied this request, I would be willing to work with you, as I indicated before, and you can, you can come out with a project that'll make a profit and be an asset to the community. If we approve this request tonight, okay, what's my phrase I used to use at the planning commission? The beat goes on. And for you and your efforts, the beat will continue to go on, but when the beat stops, as it will, then you are facing a potential financial disaster in this project and possibly a personal tragedy, which can be avoided. Unfortunately, I just can't believe that you've been properly informed of the danger signs and zones, or you have chosen to ignore some of them regarding this property's location and the factors of land and the topographical, topographical features surrounding it, okay? In the future, if this was approved, circumstances beyond your control will come up as obstacles in this project, and when you go for financing from outside sources, that means banks or lending agencies, I don't know what they do today, but they're going to run for cover. You're not going to get it when it comes to halfway through this project and you want to finish it off. And then what happens after that? South Lion's stuck with it. It's location, location, it's, it's a bad location for, for something like this. You're going to get working families in the small ones and, or single-parent families. You're going to get cats and dogs, children. That means toys, garbage cans, flags, balls and gloves and one thing or another outside on the lawn, and little squabbles and fights from time to time. It's going to be a menagerie. And there's no way to stop it, once, once we let the, open the door and let it go in. So, Carmen, I'm sorry, I gotta, I gotta say I'm against this project, okay, rezoning, but we, it could still all be solved, it could still be corrected, okay? We could still make something out of this. But this is the wrong, the wrong birthday cake here. Thank you.
Councilmember Presian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is just going to be something that I think, of course, has to go through the approval of council and the mayor, but if, forgive me, I forgot your name. The woman in the back had come up earlier during public comment and provided 42 names for the petition. If you went through, thank you, if you went through all those efforts to go door-to-door and get those names, I think we should allow that on the, in the packet so that people can see that as well. So it's, again, at the pleasure of council and the mayor, but I don't want your efforts to be wasted. I want it to be known that we did hear your concern, we addressed your concern, and the 42 individuals who also believe in this as well, so...
So, we just need to make a copy of those?
I think we can provide a copy to Lisa. If you could just provide a copy of that to Lisa over here in the corner, we can get that put in the packet so that everyone else can see it and a record can be made. Thank you. Thank you.
I have nothing.
Well, I think we need to really just draw a line in the chalk here and see where we can find some middle ground on this. As it was mentioned by Councilmember Kennedy, this property is capable of putting in over 300 apartments, as is. Is that something our residents of Colonial Acres would rather see than 50 middle-ranged mixture of ranch developments with a pot, you know, it says that they're going to add a privacy fence and some, some, you know, vegetation between there? You know, it, it seems like it gets to a point like this when things will get through the planning commission, people aren't that upset about it because it's not done yet. And then it gets to the council level and things start rolling and people get upset. And that's fine. It's part of being an American. We get to come out here and say what we want. But the fact of the matter is, if we turn this down today, we're putting the ball back in their court to really do, I'm, I'm not being judgmental here, but if they so choose, they're going to go put 300 apartments in this property, and you're not going to be able to do a darn thing about it. So, I think it's best for all of us to either get together and discuss some options on changing this, on what we don't like about it, instead of shutting the door on something and putting it in a position where we're not going to be able to do anything about it. So, I'm willing to continue having this discussion. We have an extremely loaded agenda tonight with other issues that are very similar to this coming up later. I'm not trying to rush through it. If people have something they would like to add to this, I would appreciate to hear it now, instead of us spinning our tires here, because we got, we, we definitely have a lot going on, so... Councilmember Kurtswell, I'm going to come to you next. Councilmember Kittle, motion to speak first. Go ahead.
I, I think there is an awful lot of room to negotiate the situation if the developer has an interest in entertaining the idea. Essentially, we need to end up being protected from an onslaught of ZBA ideas going on. So, if there's some way to demonstrate that there is, all the amenities that are being, becoming more typical to everybody's backyard can be handled in the lot, I, I just don't see how you turn a 4,300 square foot lot into something capable of hosting a house, meeting the setbacks, and then still having room to put a deck and the things that people are looking for back there. So, personally, it seems to me that the, the easiest solution is to try to expand the footprint of those lots, cut down the number of units that you're likely to put in there, and try to, try to negotiate the strongest position that you can move in that direction. So, I, I'm hoping that there's a willingness to at least have a conversation like that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only comment that I'm going to make is, is that this is a great community, Colonial Acres, and I guess I don't understand why maybe the developer, maybe you have, I don't know if you have sat down with any of the residents and had a meeting, and, and I'm sure the city would provide you with facilities, whether it's a conference room there or maybe a room like this, and, and listen to their concerns. They've built their lives here, they have their families here, they've made a commitment to this community, and, and that's all I'm going to say, is that sometimes if you just sit down and talk with them and give them an opportunity for a little bit of input and hear, hear what they have to say, and give them an opportunity to have a little bit of a stake in who their new neighbors are going to be. I, I guess I don't understand why that hasn't been done, but I think if I were the developer on this project, that would have been something I would have done a long time ago, but I would suggest maybe you do it now. These are reasonable people. I don't think it's going to end up being a battle or a war. There may be a little bit of tempers at some point, but I would hope everybody would very calmly approach it and, and understand the reality at the end of the day, is that an apartment building could go in, and that may not be what you really want, so I would offer to facilitate, but I can't. But that's what I would do. I, I would maybe put this off for another 30 days, and, and there's the, the petition, you have the names of the people, send them a letter, have a meeting, and just hear what the people have to say. I mean, that's what I would do. But that's just me.
I would entertain a motion to postpone this to next month.
Yeah, I'll move that we postpone this to the second meeting of September.
For the record, that'll be the 24th. Thank you, Steve.
Hang on just a second.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor and council.
Please state your name.
Lorenzo Camiller, 30078 Shaner, Warren, Michigan.
Thank you.
The, the project has yet to be even introduced tonight. After the revisions, based on our meeting two council meetings ago, we met with, with city officials and had several discussions, revised plans, went back and forth, and the, the project, as it's being proposed and part of your packet, has not even been presented. Is, is that a, a part of protocol for, for, for a council meeting that the applicant and the consultant don't, because I don't know that, excuse me, that many people here know the changes that we made based on our last meeting and the discussions we had at the last meeting and the conversations that we had with, with your different departments within the city in the last plus or minus 30 days. So I, I guess I'm asking if, if, if that's okay, that the project be proposed, whether it's by the city's consultant or myself or whoever, but we're talking about making a motion and, and we haven't, I, at least, I have not been able to speak on behalf of the project.
Nope, that's fair enough.
No one has heard anything on behalf of the project. So, I, I don't know formal protocol, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Okay. I didn't see whose hand went up first there, but I saw Glenn first, so we're gonna go to councilmember Kibble.
You're absolutely right that, that the public hasn't received the information that we've been going through for the last week, but we're pretty well read into what you've done differently. Though, all of those waivers still exist. Nothing has been spoken to that you have an, an interest in relaxing any of these positions. That's sort of the basis of most of where the conflict comes from. So, I mean, if there, you won't entertain the idea of, of reducing what your waiver would end up being, it's gonna be a tough conversation.
Mr. Councilman, actually, we had a, what was a, an approval for sixty forty-foot lots.
Right.
On this same site. So if we wanna talk about, like, relaxing the plan, we, I mean, we basically took out twenty percent, what are eighteen percent, of, of the number of lots.
Well, I didn't vote to support that one, and I wouldn't vote for this either.
I'm just saying, that was approved, and we-
But that's not in existence anymore. It's explained.
No, it is not. No, I'm saying, we came back with the plan with six, fifty, fifty-foot wide lots instead of sixty forty-foot wide lots. So we removed ten units from the project. The lots increased from forty-foot wide to fifty-foot wide. Other concerns, I think one of the biggest concerns of Colonial Acres was the connection of Lexington to-
That was-
The Colonial Acres Road, which was a recommendation from police and fire, which we've agreed that we, we were requested to provide an easement by the city in the event in the future that, that there could be a connection. I don't, that doesn't, has nothing to do, we provided the easement to the city based on the city's request. We don't have to have an easement that could potentially connect Lexington to Colonial Acres. No one, no one in this proposed development would go through Colonial Acres to get out when eleven miles right there. So it's, so that is something that was a request made on us that I know that Colonial Acres was not in favor of. I'm not in favor of that either. I don't think there should be a connection there. We provided the easement because it was a request of the city to, to provide that easement. The screening and the barrier, that was a question that came up. So we agreed through your, with, in meetings with, with, with city officials and consultants that we would provide a, a barrier with the, with the six-foot vinyl fence so that there would be an, an instant barrier, let's say, as opposed to waiting five or six years for trees to mature. And we repositioned some of the, some of the evergreens along the property line there, redesigned the fence along there. All of the focus in the plan, if you look from a year, year and a half ago to where it is today, is, for the most part, addressing concerns that have come up from Colonial Acres. If you wanna talk about density, the density on Colonial Acres is considerably greater than the density in this development. And for, you know, just a little bit of history, this site does have the ability to be developed with, I know that the number's north of three hundred, but I think we could probably get about two hundred and fifty apartment units in there. That's a development that is, I don't know that the city, I mean, I'm not here to fight. I'm here to get a project approved, and fifty by, the depths in the lots range from eighty when they're backing up to like the pond, so it's kind of like an open space behind it, to a hundred and twenty feet deep. And as you stated initially about the, having a development that doesn't come back at a later date with issues like, can you put a patio or a deck, or, it's my understanding that that is something that would be worked out through the plan development agreement, which is, it's fairly common in most communities that your setback is your building setback. It's your, the footprint of your home. And there are several communities that you can go into that setback if it's not a permanent structure like a deck. It's that setback, that thirty-foot setback is generally for the home itself. And it's my understanding that, well, that, I know that in a lot of communities, they're changing that ordinance now because you run into the situation that you spoke of earlier, where at a later date you buy a home and then you move in and you say, I wanna go put a patio in or a deck, and city says, well, no, you're encroaching into this setback.
It's lot area coverage is actually the biggest concern here, not, not even the setbacks. You're talking about, you're literally at eighty-three, or excuse me, forty-eight percent of what the actual for an R3 house would be. The R3 house would be an eighty, let's see, eighty-seven fifty square foot. You're talking about, what was it, forty-two hundred square feet?
Councilmember Kibble, this will be the last follow-up question, at least from you, because we have other councilmembers that would like to jump in on this too.
The allowable coverage is twenty-five percent. The coverage that we have is fourteen percent.
Does anyone-
As calculated by-
It's a substantially smaller home than what I was gleaning from all the information that you guys had provided.
No, in, in, in the table on the site plan, the maximum percentage of allowed is twenty-five percent, as calculated by the, by the city ordinance. Ours is fourteen point six percent.
Could you ballpark what the square footage of the house is?
The square footage of the homes will be roughly in eighteen hundred-
So nine hundred a floor, essentially?
Well, if it's, if it's a ranch, it'd be, maybe it won't be eighteen hundred square foot on one floor, but if, if it was a colonial, maybe a thousand and twelve hundred because you have the garage and the second, but still, yeah, roughly speaking, yes.
Yeah, okay.
If it's a colonial, it's eighteen hundred square feet, you got nine and, nine, nine hundred, nine hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell, do you still have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that nobody is denying you an opportunity to speak. We did have a motion, just putting this off for thirty days, and at that point, I think it's everyone's intention that we will hear the full, you know, presentation, but nobody is denying you an opportunity at all. We're just asking you to just meet with the people from Colonial Acres, give you, give them your presentation, tell them the changes that you've made, and let them come to the next meeting in thirty days, and we'll see where we're at. But nobody's denying you an opportunity to, to make a presentation, it's just been delayed, that's all. So I'm gonna ask that the motion that was made, was there a second on that?
I actually have further discussion.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Was there a second on that earlier motion? I don't believe there was, so. So go ahead, we'll take that motion. Councilmember Prezian, go ahead.
I'll be brief, I'm sorry. So, I just wanted to make a couple of things clear. First and foremost, I apologize, I don't think, I can't speak for everyone on council, but I don't think this is gonna look like a trailer park. I don't think that was meant to be in, that's, if it was insulting to you, I'm sorry. Please don't take that as council's overall opinion, because that's, that's not the opinion of all of us on council. One of us doesn't speak for all of us, so I'm sorry if that offended you. Also, I wanted to make it known that this is your property, you're coming to council for approval, and we know you're working hard with your team to do what you can to move this forward, but you have to understand from our perspective, we, our constituents are the community. It's this, it's the residents that live here that we need to hear their voices and have their concerns addressed as well. So it's important to us to make sure that they know what's going on, they see the full picture. We see it, but they're not seeing what we see. So that's, that's where we're coming from as a council perspective. And we understand the frustration on your end as well, but we're just trying to balance out the hardships here. So, please understand that this isn't meant to be insulting, this isn't meant to intentionally trip you up and delay this process any sooner, we just need to make sure our constituents have the full understanding of what's going on and what's going to come in the future, good, bad, or ugly, they need to know what we know.
Thank you. And at the last meeting, there was one person representing Colonial Acres, and there was one concern that was mentioned that night, and that was the connection of Lexington Drive, and that was it.
Right.
We took everything else that was discussed in the meeting, we went back through the city departments, we addressed every concern that came up in the last council meeting, which I was hoping that, that the planning director would be able to present what, the work that we did over the last thirty days. At some point, the, the process can only get pushed back, I mean, so much, and then we regroup on our end. The property was purchased from somebody who's indirectly related to Colonial Acres, and at that time, the project was approved for ninety attached condominium units, fifteen buildings with ninety units and outside parking. So it went from, the evolution of this, went from what could be over three hundred apartment units, what was approved as ninety attached units, and these are not duplexes, they were, well, some, some of the buildings were six and eight, eight, eight plexes, then was approved for forty, sixty forty-foot lots, and now we're trying to get fifty fifty-foot lots, and the thought that, that us as developers were not trying to work with the issues at hand, the resubmital addresses everything that we discussed in the last meeting, and the concern at the last meeting was only, there was one, it's, it's on the record, and that was the connection of Lexington Drive.
From the public?
From Colonial Acres, correct, from anyone.
Right, right.
For that man, from anyone.
I have the same ones that I still have.
Councilmember Kibble?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Councilmember Prezian, please, you're-
So, again, I completely understand your concerns, I see where you're coming from because it can be incredibly frustrating knowing that only public hearings are meant for individuals to come forward and speak and address their concerns regarding an issue, and only one person spoke, so that's the only feedback you really received from the public, not including council, just the public. So, when I spoke to a few residents from Colonial Acres, they had indicated to me that they didn't even know there was a public hearing. They had no idea. So, that's the concern that I have. Again, I'm one of seven, I can't speak for everyone, but we're, we're not trying to play a cat and mouse game with you, because in thirty days, I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to move this along and we're not gonna give you another piece of the puzzle that you have to try to figure out what we want next. That's not the goal here. The goal is simply to, to get, to address your concerns, but also address the public's concerns. If the public didn't know about the public hearing, that's a concern, they need to be able to speak to it. So, if we give this a second chance and you address the concerns with the residents at Colonial Acres, I think that might be able to subdue some of their worries, possibly, it might not, you can't please everyone, but the fact that you tried will go a long way with council.
And I'm, I'm willing to cooperate in that fashion. There, there was a public hearing, there's, there's, there's a whole notice process that we're all aware of.
I know, I agree.
There's not an RSVP for that, so we don't know, like, who's coming and who's not.
I understand.
And I can only react to what, to, to what I hear. We're dealing with an issue right now from a timing perspective of this project being built or not being built.
What's your timeframe?
Well, the, the, the plants, asphalt plants close at the, in December, the beginning of December, and we're on a track right now, where at the last meeting, I was requesting that we, we, we were able to, to table to the following meeting, which would've been two weeks later, but we ended up going, being tabled thirty days.
I remember, I voted in favor of the two weeks, not the month, I remember that.
And, and I had said that there's, we can definitely resubmit within that timeframe, and now we're looking at another thirty days. So when you look at the first council meeting that had a recommendation from planning to approve, which I understand, it's just a recommendation, you guys have your vote and they have their vote, but now we're, we're sixty days out, and Labor Day's coming up, and the leaves are gonna turn, and then it's, then it's gonna rain three days a week.
I understand, that's incredibly-
And all that impacts the development, and, and at some point, we, you know, from our, as a developer, we have to look at, okay, now, if we're gonna have these types of delays and we're going to incur these additional costs, then maybe we should look at our rights as to what we can do here.
All right.
And, and that's-
Thank you, sir. All right.
Thank you.
We need, everyone's made their point pretty clear here, I got a couple of things. We should expedite this meeting if we can.
Yes.
We need, we need you to go talk to our friends at Colonial Acres, and it needs to happen before we will discuss this, at least in my eyes, I'm one of seven. Second of all, I want to apologize to anyone that was insulted by the trailer park and double-wide comment by councilmember Richards, that's inappropriate, to degrade people in our community that live in those communities and really across the country. So, I also will apologize for that because that shouldn't be a derogatory comment, but it is in this country, and so I will apologize for that. So let's talk about a date to get this done.
Can you do it in two weeks? Can we have a meeting in two weeks? Is that, that's the question, is that feasible? Is that gonna work for you to set up something with Colonial Acres and have a meeting?
Absolutely. We can, we can, I will be in contact tomorrow by noon with, I mean, there are some representatives here. I'll get a contact name and number. I can, I'll be available within the next few days. We can meet and address as much as we possibly can. I'm open-minded, I'm reasonable, but at some point, this compression of this, they, this site is not gonna be seventy or eighty-foot lots, with, it's, it's, none of it, none of it works. And, and to the point of the, starting the development and the financing, there's a top-five national builder who's, some of you may know, is ready to go on this project.
Understood.
So, those are not concerns that I think should be, so I, I'm, I'm very open to meeting with them, and if we could meet in two weeks.
Understood. Can we amend the motion? Who made the motion?
Sure, I can amend it for you.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we postpone this two weeks, so the next council meeting would be August-
Seventeenth.
Twenty-seventh. This matter will come up again on August twenty-seventh, the motion to approve the first reading.
I'll second that. Mr. Will?
Clarify whether this is a motion to amend the pending motion, or are we gonna let the first motion that was seconded, if that's withdrawn, there, a new motion could be made?
Oh, let's just amend it.
Okay.
Just amend it.
Just amend it, then.
Motion to amend.
Thank you.
Motion to amend the first motion. So you need, you need a second on the amendment, and then you need, the amendment is to change the date, but you still have to vote on the main motion, which is-
But you have to vote on both?
Yeah.
One at a time?
Okay. So then why don't we just withdraw the first motion?
I would withdraw the motion.
Thank you, councilmember Kurtzwell. So who made the motion? Was it councilmember Prezian?
This one, I made the motion to amend.
Who made the first motion?
I second that Glenn had.
Okay. So would councilmember Kibble withdraw that motion?
I withdraw that motion.
And now, we need a new motion.
Okay. So, I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance rezoning parcel twenty-one dash nineteen dash one twenty-six dash zero zero-two Thomasville from RM one Multiple Family Residential to PD Plan Development.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
No. All opposed?
Could I get a card from you?
Sure. You know, I have one in my car. I'll go.
Thanks for your cooperation as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You meet with the people, they're right here. Meet with them.
Consider appointment of Nahid Hamad Salami to the Cable Commission. Please, come on up.
Hello, everybody, and hello, Councilmember, and hello, Mr. Lloyd. Yeah, I applied for, to be on the Cable Commission with the background I have in media. I used to be executive radio producer overseas, and we just moved to South Lyon in October of last year. So, I love the city, I love the people, I love my neighbor, I love everybody here. So, I decided to, I mean, use what I know and what I'm going to learn if you appoint me for the Cable Commission, to be on Cable Commission.
Well, I'll kick things off. I'm excited to see this come through. Cable Commission has been working shorthanded.
Yeah, I heard that.
And actually, they're down two players at least, so.
Wow.
I love this, I love the story that you're relatively new to the neighborhood and getting involved, that's great.
Thank you.
Does anyone else? I'm sorry if I, I actually called out to you, I phone called, gave you a phone call earlier to see if I wanted to make sure I got your name right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I got my name right, but if it's hard for you and everybody, you can, I go by Nancy.
Your name is beautiful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Welcome, welcome to South Lyon. I'm so glad you're here. I read your application that you're an interpreter.
Yep, I am.
And what is your, what language do you interpret?
Farsi, which Persian.
Yes.
And Arabic.
Excellent, and I'll tell you why. Because I know some individuals that are thinking about moving to South Lyon, and they probably could use some assistance with respect to language.
Sure.
And that's why I asked.
Sure.
And so, I have your phone number here.
Yep.
And I want to say welcome, and it's just wonderful to have you, and I think you're going to find out, your talents are going to be called upon in many aspects other than a Cable Commission.
Thank you, I am sure.
So, thank you for wanting to be part of our community.
Sure, thank you.
I move that we appoint Nancy to the Cable Commission.
I second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, and thank you.
Great group of people on the Cable Commission, that'd be great.
Yes.
On to new business number two. Consider approval of charitable gaming license for the South Lyon High School Pon Pon Boosters. I don't know if they have represented if you're not tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, they were invited, I did not get an answer whether they would attend for sure or not.
Well, I don't have any misgiving, all their information is supplied, so, I mean, it's a good, a good thing for them. Excuse me, I'd make a motion that we approve, excuse me, the local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses recognizing South Lyon High School Pon Pon Boosters as a nonprofit organization in the community for the purpose of charitable gaming licenses.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. New business number three. Consider approval of charitable gaming license for the Goodfellas Project.
Hi.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having me. My name is Kevin Poseskin, I've lived in South Lyon since first grade, and I'm the founder and president of the Goodfellas Project. We just started in March, it's a nonprofit that a group of my friends and I started in South Lyon High School, and so far, just to give you a little background, we are dedicated to helping low-income homeless families just around South Lyon and Detroit and just everywhere, anywhere we can. And it's cool because just past weekend, Saturday and Sunday, we furnished a house for a homeless family, that was a really big project for the month of August, and so it was a mother and three kids that just came out of the shelter, and they had nothing, they were sleeping on the floor, and we came in and we partnered with another youth organization called the Caleb Way Project, and we furnished home for them, and so that was really exciting. And there's a couple more things that, we help out Active Faith in South Lyon, we've done projects with them, and at Grace Centers of Hope, we held a Mother's Day dinner for the women and children in the shelter, so that was really fun. And we just hope to keep continuing to do things and help those in need, and just this gaming license would help us because September, we have festival booths at Pumpkin Fest and at Northville Fest, and we'd hope to be able to hold raffles just to raise funds for our projects, and thank you for considering this.
Well, that's fantastic, and I think you guys are also responsible for cleaning up the roads here in town, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Does anyone else? Councilmember Prezian, go ahead.
This is very cool. So, thank you so much for doing this and just being a part of our community, in such a big way. I can't remember off the top of my head what organization it was that sent council an email, but it was kind of alarming because it was two-hundred-and-eleven concerns, or phone calls regarding homelessness and shelter issues in the city of South Lyon, and little did we know that that was actually such a big issue. We had no idea, and it actually is quite prevalent, like it's a problem. I think people are very focused, rightfully so, on the opioid issue at the moment, and human trafficking and things of that nature, which are all incredibly important, that we sometimes overlook other things that need our attention as well. So, the fact that we have organizations such as yours that help out with this specific issue, it's a need in South Lyon. Thank you.
And I agree, and just like one of the things that we want to do is with our peers is to like, just show them what is going on too, because a lot of times, we just fall in our own bubbles and we don't really just see what's going on in our community and just everywhere. And that's another thing we want to do, because, by the way, check out our website, goodfellasproject.org and Google us, we're going to have pictures of just this project upcoming, but you'll see like we have thirty kids just from South Lyon and South Lyone East coming out and like seeing in communities such as Detroit like what's happening and what's going on. And I just love that they're really willing to help, and we continue to, we hope to continue to do so.
Thanks.
Yeah. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, first of all, for speaking with me before the meeting. I want to, I thank you for that. I started my career in very, very early years when I was your age in the nonprofit area, and to this day, continue to support nonprofit activities wherever they may be. I think the most important thing that you are demonstrating tonight is you are setting a standard for leadership for young individuals in our community that are saying, you know, material objects aren't necessarily what's important. What is important is how you are giving back to another human being, the character that you are building, the selfishness, the, you know, your lack of greed, your caring for everybody else. I think these are great character-building moments for you, I think it says a lot about you, but more importantly, what I am excited about is that you become a role model for other individuals in the city, and we can look to you and say, I want to be like him, I want to be as giving as he is, I want to be as caring as he is, I want to give of myself the way he does. Because, because even though the world is so big, you'd be surprised, the little tiny things you do that make a change in somebody's life. And, and I think you're just a great role model for me, for all of us, but more importantly, I think for your generation. So, thank you for, for doing what you're doing, it says a lot about the family in which you were raised, that there are other values that are more important than the color of the car you drive and the kind of clothes that you wear and, you know, where you, you know, party, you know, on weekends. You know, you're making different choices, and those choices are very good for all of us, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
I move to approve the local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses recognizing the Goodfellas Project as a nonprofit organization in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming licenses.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Motion passes. New business number four. Consider approval to remove gazebo at northeast corner of McCady Park near Lafayette and the rail trail. I don't see a reason for there to be a whole lot of discussion about this. So, if anyone has anything...
I'll make the motion to approve the removal of the gazebo on the northeast corner of McCady Park.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Sorry, Carl, you need to step over there. New business number five. Consider approval to purchase five in-car mobile data computers using drug forfeiture funds. Chief Collins?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. This topic and this purchase was previously discussed in the budget workshops. The suggestion was made by Plant, Marin that we take the funding for this project from the existing drug forfeiture funds. So, the money is there, it is budgeted. Because the, there would be no advantage to the city in shopping this around since Oakland County Clemis is our source and our vendor for a lot of the technology that goes into our police cars, and because we're already reaping the benefits of quantity purchases through Clemis, we would request two motions. One, to waive the competitive bidding process because there would be no advantage to the city, and then a second motion to approve the purchase.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to waive the competitive bidding process because there would be no advantage to the city in obtaining bids.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Secondly, I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the five MDCs for the twenty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents using the drug forfeiture funds.
I'll second.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. I just had two comments on this, and that would be, whenever something comes before council, I know what I'm looking for. Chief Vogel does it really well, is refer to where in the budget, the actual line item budget that we're talking about. In this case, I went to, I had to sort of spend some time going through the budget. So, it would always help if whoever's preparing these bids, and if you're getting something out of the budget, you refer to where in the budget this item has been approved. I was talking to a couple of financial individuals, and we were talking about municipal finance, and I think what the discussion was is actually dealing with how bids and things like that are presented to the governing unit. And I think what that does is it forces the department head to take a look at the budget, see where they're at in the budget, and provide a little bit of financial data and information to the governing board, such as this is found in the, you know, drug forfeiture fund, here's our, here's our fund balance, it doesn't exceed the fund balance, et cetera, because what it does is it gets you trained in some aspects to complementing your discussion on the item with a good reference to the budget. So, my first criticism, not criticism, well, yeah, it is, is to, on these items, is please try to refer to the budget. I think that helps, like I said, Chief Vogel does a great job in doing that. The second one is, I thought I read in here, and correct me if I'm wrong, that Clemis made a comment that this, the equipment was a little bit outdated. Is that true? It's been about several years or something?
Our existing equipment is quite outdated.
Since Clemis recently informed us that our department is one of five out of one-hundred-and-twenty-five police departments on the Clemis system that has not upgraded to the Dell MDC package. How did that happen? Because clearly, clearly, if other police departments are catching this upgrade, why didn't South Lyon Police catch it? And when I went to the budget, I looked at the beginning fund balance, and you have a beginning fund balance of forty-six thousand dollars. So, clearly, the money had been there to do it, unless, did you just get the money in there, or how did that happen?
Chief Collins, go ahead.
Yes, we try to be responsible with the taxpayers' dollars, or in this case, the forfeiture dollars, and our MDCs in the vehicles, for the most part, were working okay. They only recently became a problem, one or two of them. When they did, we came to council at budget workshop and sought approval, and that's why the package is here today.
Just a little bothered by the comment that was made by Clemis in terms of outdated equipment.
Councilmember Richards, do you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to add that the police department budgets and their equipment and everything is all very specialized. The average person can't completely grasp it, and how they, where they get the money, if it's a drug forfeiture or some other manner, I would hope that in the future, this police department can invest in a drone, or possibly two drones. Okay, I think we need them, I think we needed them a long time ago. But anyway, that's just my comment, okay?
Thanks, Councilmember Richards. We had a motion and a second, so I will take us back to that. All in favor of the motion and the second?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. New business number six. Consider approval of two replacement furnace and AC units at the Police and Fire Administration
Mr. Mayor, this topic was also previously discussed at budget workshops. It has been budgeted, and we were, on this item, perhaps, a little slow too, because I have to inform council that between the time we were putting this together and waiting for the council meeting, and the time we talked to the various vendors, the air conditioning units have basically failed in the Police and Fire Training and Administration Building. So, we're barely limping by on about fifty percent capacity of one air conditioning unit and zero functioning of the other unit.
Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the purchase of the and installation of the furnace and air conditioning unit as bid by United, or Unlimited, excuse me, Heating and Cooling LLC for twelve thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. Once again, this is another budget issue. It doesn't, I had to go into the budget to take a look at where this money was coming out of, and it appears that it's coming out of capital outlay, that was in the discussion at the budget season. The capital outlay portion that's been allotted to the police department is fifteen thousand dollars. So, if you subtract out the twelve thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for the roof, you're going to come a little bit short on the office furniture that's budgeted for three thousand. Just want to make sure I get that out there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prezian, go ahead.
I also wanted to make a note that I deeply appreciate the fact that you are so frugal with the taxpayers' monies, and that you take the time to budget everything out consistently, and not having air conditioning is rough, especially in these ninety-degree days, and it's been quite frequent that we've had ninety-degree days as well. So, thank you to you and your department and the fire department as well for all that you're doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I had discussions with Lieutenant Silvic and Chief Collins on this topic when this was on the, on the docket a couple of weeks back, and it was pulled from the packet so that those questions could be addressed. I just want to compliment you on going through the effort to get the additional information and with the decision made going with the Unlimited Heating Company to replace those units. Sorry that the units failed in the meantime.
Nonetheless, we appreciated your input.
Appreciate it. We have a motion and a second on the floor, so we'll get back to that. All in favor of the motion and the second?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? New business number seven. Consider approval of first reading of ordinance amendment to add section twenty-two dash one-six-seven, soliciting in public roadway prohibited and its exceptions.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Will?
Mr. Mayor, council, I can address this.
You've been provided with quite a bit of information to support this. But basically, this is an ordinance amendment that will set up the requirements for soliciting within the traveled portion of the roadway. And this is to comply and bring the city into compliance and force the people that want to engage in that activity to meet the statutory requirements that allow them to solicit within the roadway. So there are a number of requirements as listed in the statute. We've matched those, there are a few additional ones regarding some of the more aggressive type of tactics. But really, this is, this is to put you into compliance and allow these people and the city to regulate and allow these people to do this in compliance with the statute. In preparing this ordinance, there is a larger scope ordinance that needs to take place with respect to all soliciting peddlers and canvassers within the city. That's going to take a little bit more time, but this is a short stopgap to address the statutory issues that have been raised.
Thank you, Tim.
Well, I'm making a motion that we approve the first reading of the ordinance amending the City of South Lion Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22 Businesses, Article 6-Solicitors, to add the new section 22-167, Soliciting in Public Roadways Prohibited, Exceptions to Comply with the Requirements and Statutory Amendments in Public Act 112 of, excuse me, of 2017, applicable to soliciting in public roadways.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. New business number eight, consider approval of first reading of ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of South Lion, conditionally rezoning 825 West Lake Street, parcel 21-30-126-005, from R1A, one-family residential, to RM3, multiple-family residential.
Good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Langen, my address is 128 North Center Street. And I am the applicant of this project. This is the first time before you. So I'm here basically to answer any questions you have. But if you're interested, I would run through some of the high points of this proposal.
I think that's fair.
Very well, thank you. So I don't have an easel tonight and our civil engineer couldn't pay kids off a meeting. But this is a four-and-a-half acre parcel at the corner of Lake Street from Dixboro. It's bordered by Livingston County to the west. And the township kind of all around. And to the, would that be the south, is that industrial complex?
Correct.
There is one neighbor who kind of interrupts the square and that's this resident right there. That actually is in the township. This property was in the township for a long time. We purchased it and we annexed it into the city. And during the course of several meetings with some of the city representatives, we have come up with a plan based on a lot of planning considerations. One of them being that the multifamily market is an underserved market in the city and kind of regionally. Small parcel, the proximity to the industrial property and the residential across the street makes this a good transitional zone between industrial and single-family residential. It's close enough to the downtown area that we believe that pedestrian foot traffic to provide, you know, customers for the downtown businesses is a very viable thing. In fact, one of the, one of the things that we proposed in this application is a footpath connecting us to the, to the trail, which is just up Dixboro Road, a short little bit. In the package, I wrote a series of conditions that we are offering to the city. And I don't really want to go from memory, but I'll have to. Basically, what we're proposing physically is 72 units in three buildings. We're proposing high-quality façades with durable building materials to be low maintenance and to provide a very good look and feel that's going to last that way for a long time. Also, our interior finishes, granite countertops, in-unit washers and dryers, lots of amenities to attempt to attract a more upscale tenant that we hope is going to be low turnover, you know, good quality tenants that are going to provide good, good residence for the community. One other thing, on the site itself, if you can see here, the entrance from Lake Street, what we did was we took the buildings off to the side so that as you're coming in, you see the yard and the gazebo and you don't see a big giant facade right on the road, more or less dominating the view. So it does have more of an open look as you come into the site. I'm looking at this and seeing some examples, the carports are specifically taken away from the buildings and they're a little bit more opened up. These are in our effort to address crime prevention standards and first responder considerations so they don't have to fumble through the carports when they're making a call. And they're relatively open so that nobody can, you know, lay in wait, so to speak. So we've addressed that. We have a landscape plan that I did not make a blow-up of in the package. It's generously landscaped. It is heavily screened with the neighbor who kind of shares that square with us. The front edge is landscaped nicely. We added a secondary access point there on Dixboro Road for emergency circulation. I guess I'm drawing a blank on any more of the details, but if you have any questions, I'll happily, happily address them.
Absolutely, thank you. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
What happens to the house that exists there now?
That's scheduled for change.
You're going to take that down and then use the entire piece of property? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kill, go ahead.
I'm sorry, how big is that lot?
Four point six, six something acres.
Okay, not substantively, substantively different from Thomasville, actually, so. The only thing that I saw in here that, and this is more probably on our side, I think, is on page five, the city right to rezone, number six. It says that, you know, nothing, nothing in the agreement shall deem to prohibit the city from rezoning it in the event that they, their clock expires. Why are we changing the language that typically goes back where it reverts back to its original zoning?
Can you point that out again?
Oh, yeah, page five, number six, city right to rezone. I mean, essentially after paragraph five, it seems as though the, it should be, the agreement will be voided at the end, and the entire property will revert to the original R1A zoning.
It's simply to preserve the right to rezone the property. So once you, if you were to approve the conditional rezoning, there's a time period that's built into that agreement.
Right, this one's 18 months.
And that's included in the statute. So you have, that's really the only moving part by statute that you're allowed to address. And that's really, just once those time periods run out, you could rezone the property. But by operation, it should revert back to if they haven't proceeded in accordance with their requirements.
Well, that was my point. I mean, typically, it would automatically just revert. So why, why would we want to leave that on the table?
If I may, I know this is city business, but this may help. This was annexed, so the default zoning was, was the 1A zoning. And it very well may be that it's master planned for a different use. I think might have been part of the discussion.
It's actually master planned for suburban residential. That's the long and the short of it. It's pretty broad scope, so.
Councilmember Richards had something and then I'll come to you.
I've got something, Mr. Langen.
Yes, sir.
Before this property was annexed into the City of South Lion, as my understanding, it was a syndicated ownership of the property and the property owners were an investment holding company in New York City. Now, has that been purchased by your concern or your corporation? Or the dominant number of shares has been transferred to you?
Well, not only did I purchase the land with my partner, but we did not purchase it from any syndication. We purchased it from a private landowner.
A private, a private person owned that property?
By Chuck Sats originally?
Who acquired it as a...
And that was after?
It was acquired by him, I happen to know he's my father, but he acquired it from a bank who had foreclosed on the previous owner's interest.
But it was in the township at that time?
That's correct.
That's right.
Who petitioned this?
I did, sir.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Langen, okay, I have one final comment on my part. I see great potential in that property. Personally, I think that property is worth more than what you envisioned, okay? I've talked to other people about that piece of land. And there's some much greater possibilities that can be developed on that particular parcel than just the housing market, okay, or rental. Various people have agreed with me that that site is ideal for an elongated version of a roundup, roundabout, excuse me, okay, in development of 10 mile there, okay? If the population in this surrounding area is going to triple in the next 25 years, we probably won't be here, okay? But if that's going to be the case, okay, that corner is going to be of extreme importance, okay, in the future because of the availability of expansion there, okay? Other planners have looked at it and agreed with me on that, okay? And what's more, your property joins that, I think part of it joins the industrial park, West End Development, the name of it, okay?
The butts, yeah, the property line's a butt.
In my opinion, someday that's going to be developed. And your property is ideal for an office development to complement, okay, the industrial parcels that are on West End Development. Because Dixboro is going to be expanded and improved, okay? It's not on the table right now, but it's going to be much different than it is today. Remember, the population's going to triple around here. They got to build a road somewhere, okay? Anyway, I'm just throwing that at you, okay?
Appreciate that.
Okay, that's my observation on this property. It's worth a lot more than what your plan involves for the future. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, please.
I just want to disclose to council that I know Attorney Langdon. I see him around town. So I do want to make sure that people know about that, Tim. I don't see a conflict. I've never represented Mr. Langdon or any of his entities legally and have no legal relationship with him at all, except it's social, maybe two times, three times a year, at structured events.
In fact, we've been adversaries.
Actually, we have been adversaries. We have. And Bob's a very good adversary.
Likewise.
Well, I don't want you anymore as an adversary. But anyway, I want to make sure that that gets out there.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Councilmember Kennedy, please.
Looking at the master plan, it indicates that this is designated for light industrial in this area. Or is that just the surrounding piece, not just, not just yours?
Go ahead.
I couldn't comment on that specifically. I believe the industrial to our south is master planned industrial. And quite frankly, I don't recall specifically. I thought that ours was master planned other than industrial, but we could...
Do you have any information on that? It isn't broken out, it isn't detailed enough, obviously, to show the little sliver that belongs in Lion Township right now.
That's the impression I was under.
So I'm just, just curious.
Yeah, I was under the impression that, and I'd have to take a second look at it, but that we, when they had proposed annexing this, we were just finishing up the master plan. And we gave it the same designation as the abutting property. That's why this was kind of tricky in terms of our review. We actually met with the applicant a long time ago when they were first thinking about bringing it into the city. And we had recommended office development as one of the possibilities to be looked at as a transitional use. And after they did their research, looked at the location and the market, the fact that we're proposing a lot of office development immediately in our downtown area, that they felt that it'd be better to look at the residential end of it and not necessarily, you know, compete with what we're looking to do with the, with the downtown area. And also still felt that it was a good transitional use. So at that point, we then encouraged them to go the way of, you know, higher quality apartments. We really don't have a lot of high-quality apartments. I know throughout the area, there's folks who, you know, may be moving here from, you know, a company relocates them here for two years. They can't find the type of apartments that are being proposed here, so. So that, that's the direction they moved in. And I think he explained all the attributes of the project. One thing I would like to point out too, one of the conditions they are offering for this is site plan approval. So they will go back and go through, although you have a lot of the detail here, there's still some smaller items that would still have to be worked out and they would still go through site plan approval and get all the details worked out with the planning commission. So I thought that was important to note.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Prezyan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three concerns I wanted to address. Do we look into the traffic, a traffic study, the influx of traffic, how that will be affected? South Lion is kind of congested at the moment traffic-wise, as is the surrounding area. How do we feel about adding X amount additional families to the community and the amount of traffic that's going to be added?
Yes, well, this being kind of a conceptual stage, we have not engaged a traffic consultant. I don't know if that's required as a condition of final site plan, but we would certainly contemplate it. And, yeah, I mean, it's a true, it's a fact that we're going to add traffic. I think the, part of the motivation to add the secondary access on Dixboro Road was to help alleviate some of the anticipated traffic concerns. But yes, it's, it's without question going to add traffic.
That's just a concern that I know we get a lot of, I guess, frustration from the community about how congested the roads already are. So anytime a new building or new structure goes up, whether it, whether it's industrial, residential, or commercial, a lot of the feedback is, hey, we don't have room on the roads, where are we going to fit these cars? So that's, that's the concern, that's why I bring it up, just to give you some context. My second concern is, did we just confirm that this is industrial?
I think it's a strong guess.
Okay, because we...
You mean the master plan or the zoning?
The master plan.
Yeah.
Because based on the literature that we have in front of us, it does indicate that it's industrial. And if that is the case, we don't have a lot of industrial properties zoned currently in the City of South Lion. And we just had an individual come to us earlier this year requesting industrial turned into residential. And we shot that down on the sole basis that we didn't have enough industrial property, we wanted to preserve it. So this, this document says two different things. It says we're changing it from S, or R1 to R3. But if it is industrial, that changes the game slightly. So I think we just need to confirm what is this piece of land.
Are you asking what it's zoned or what it's master planned? Because it's zoned R1A.
Okay, so our master plan is indicating that it's meant for industrial use.
I think none of us really knows that at this point.
That's the gray area here, okay.
Well, remember, because this was in Lion Township up until last year.
Okay, so...
So it was not capable of being master planned because it was not part of the community.
Okay, that's true, and that's, that's a good reasoning. I would then encourage council to take a look at then, we, we have it master planned. We have a plan for the, our master plan indicates that it's industrial. That's what we're looking for in the future. And is it something that we're willing to change? Is it something that we would be willing to change to add apartments? So I think that's something council really needs to give consideration to, especially given the fact that we just turned down an individual earlier this year saying that we are not willing to give up our industrial zone properties for residential. So I just, I want to point that out. I'm neither here nor there, this is something that I think just needs to be brought to light. My third concern is, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Never mind, come back to me.
Really quickly, I just wanted to jump on that. It was actually about a year ago, so it was about this time last year that that was on.
Thank you.
Because I was on the other side of the desk.
The days blur together.
Do we have anything else?
I do, I just remembered it. Okay, so earlier this meeting, we just had an individual come to us. And granted, this is a case-by-case issue, we need to identify facts as they come to us. But we, I feel as though we're setting a double standard here. If we were to approve this tonight, the... If we were to approve this tonight, the gentleman that was just here earlier at the meeting has kind of brought the same thing forward, different, different set of facts, but he's asking us to change residential zoning as well. And we've been shooting that guy down left and right, postponing him, postponing him. And then all of a sudden, you come before us, and we're like, sure, why not? Let's go ahead and do this.
The thought had occurred to me.
Right, so I just, again, I want to point this out, that we're setting a double standard here. Again, different set of facts, we need to look at things on a case-by-case basis. This is high-class apartments, they're beautiful, but he also has very nice homes that he's presenting as well. So we might-
I may, yeah, I mean, I get that, and I was thinking about that. And what came to my mind, just in the brief time we've been here, is the location. You're abutting Livingston County, industrial, and a swamp, and residential detached. So as you look to bridge the gap between the industrial and the residential detached, I think multifamily makes a good case. And you have Livingston County on the one side. You have one neighbor who, I don't believe is present, but who, you know, we've addressed his concerns, at least preliminarily, we've exchanged numbers and we've talked. He's a resident of the township, but basically you have one neighbor who's being impacted. And on the Colonial Acres neighboring property, you have hundreds and hundreds of neighbors who are being directly impacted. And you don't really have quite the same transitional arguments that I think we're making. And I think those are compelling reasons to come to a different conclusion.
Yes, the individual that you're speaking of that borders the property didn't specifically list a complaint at the public hearing.
He was at the public hearing, he, maybe it didn't make the minutes, but we talked after the public hearing, we exchanged numbers. His concern, I'll just tell you what his concern is, is that he wanted landscapes screening between our home, between his home and our project. So it was really, not really as much of an objection as it was just a way to kind of be more neighborly about our project. And so we're gonna, we're gonna make him happy.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Carmine's got a question.
Carmine, come on down, sorry, I didn't see your hand, thank you.
No, that's good. If I could address some of the comments. First of all, with traffic, we would look at that at final site plan. They'll probably not need a traffic study because the threshold won't be exceeded, but they would need a traffic assessment. And I think the bigger issue there is going to be more the, as opposed to the volumes, it's going to be more related to access in the location of the access. Because I know there were residents that spoke about the intersection there and the stop sign in line of, lines of sight and that sort of same thing. So that would be looked at. In this particular case, in terms of what they're requesting, they are requesting a conditional rezoning, which is very different than what we saw, for example, the West End property, where they requested a straight rezoning. So under a straight rezoning, any of the uses in that requested district could be allowed. They could show one thing but do another, as long as it was in that district. The applicants are locking themselves into these conditions and into this specific project. And frankly, when we, when we looked at the master plan and we were, it was in its final stages, they came through with this that, you know, it was kind of a last-minute thing. I can honestly say we did not spend a lot of time looking at this specific property because of the timing of events. We felt that at that time, that the other properties were industrial, let's keep this industrial. And in future times, we would look at it in more detail. We were just being compatible with the abutting site. So I think the point that he made about it's still a good transitional use between the industrial and the single-family next to it, as we went over this with the planning commission, seemed to make just a lot of sense, especially since we could control the type of use in development that was going. And it made a lot more sense than putting industrial there. And by the way, the other, the West End folks could have come in with a conditional rezoning request, and they chose not to. We did offer that as an option for whatever they decided to come in with, whether it was what they were proposing or something different. Because they had a range of options within that zoning district, and they did not. And so that was one of the other reasons we did not feel comfortable with what they had proposed. Different sets of facts, different conditions. And in this particular case, I think the, both we and the planning commission felt fairly comfortable with this as a transitional land use between, once again, the single-family residents and the industrial zoning farther to the, to the west and, or to the south. And we had talked to, you know, obviously, the city attorney about that, too, in terms of how does that fit and all the things that could happen in that surrounding area.
Carmine, thank you for fleshing that out on the record, thank you.
If I may, just to reinforce that, Carmen brings up a great point. There's a lot of detail that we've provided with here at the conceptual level. So should you feel like this is something that you want in the city, you know where the buildings are, and you know what units are in the buildings, and you know what they're going to look like, because you already have that information. So, 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 yeah, this is not just a rezone, this is, we're gonna do this. And I think that's an important thing to recognize.
How are you bound by that, by what you're, we're looking at there? I mean, this is just simply a conditional rezoning, not-
Right.
Not the project itself.
The contract, the conditional rezoning ordinance and agreement that goes with it binds us to what we've submitted.
Okay.
And if we don't oblige, well, your attorney should answer this, I shouldn't, but if we don't oblige by the terms of the agreement, we lose our rights.
Okay.
Tim, back me up on this, yeah.
What he said.
Well, can I say something?
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay, maybe I don't completely understand conditional rezoning. At some point in time, if you want to delay your project, okay? And then you want to change it to put a mini mall and a party store on that lot, okay, just for sales and so forth. Does that conditional zoning mean that you can't do that? Or would you have to change the zoning?
I would have to come back to you. If I wanted to, if I wanted to merely delay this project, I would have to come back to you or the planning commission, I forget specifically who, but I would have to come back to the city and ask you not to revert it back to R1A. I would lose my rights unless you are persuaded by my reasons for delaying. So that, so you are really, you're literally holding me to the letter of my agreement. And if I, if I don't adhere to it, it is up to you to pull it or to extend it. And if I were to delay it, I would hope that I would be able to come to you and make reasonable arguments as to why. And I would hope that you would find those arguments justifiable and that you would in fact extend my timetables. But, but I'm leaving that in your, I'm leaving that up to you. And I'm saying that I'm, I'm leaving that to your future will.
We don't have a planning commission recommendation on that, I don't think, do we?
I don't think you have a commission recommendation on the actual timing. And since it came up, I will say that the timing makes me a little bit uncomfortable because going from now to final site plan approval in six months, to me, is a little tight. I've called our civil engineer, who's not returned my call, but I just think that's a little bit snug. Especially if there's any state-level permits that we would require. I think if I were to apply to some, for example, DEQ, if I were to apply tomorrow morning, I wouldn't get them six months. So I'm just a little shaky on that specific final site plan approval criteria.
Because you have, you can request an extension, so.
I can request the extension, and I'm, as much as I'm not comfortable with it, I'm, I'm-
You do have-
I'm an optimistic guy, yeah, I'll-
I'm all right with this. Motion to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of South Lyon, conditionally rezoning parcel number 21-30-126-005. That's 825 West Lake Street from the R1A, one-family residential, to RM3, multiple-family residential as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for your consideration. Look forward to working with you all.
Good luck.
Thank you.
New business number nine, consider application for Class C liquor license.
Oh, boy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Janelle Velardi. My practice is at 125 North Lafayette in South Lyon. I am an attorney, I am not the applicant. I am the attorney for the applicant, her name is Rhonda Bafano. She is here tonight, sitting over to my right. I think the best way to probably approach this is just to highlight some of the items in her application, and then certainly address any questions that you have. Either myself, or I may turn to her if there are more specific questions that she may be better suited to answer. I think the, a very good starting point to this is to look specifically at the liquor license ordinance and the purpose of the ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is very, very clear. And that's in section 8-32. It says, "The process of this application is intended to ensure that the individuals and entities seeking the license meet minimum requirements such as background, experience, financial resources, business operations and management, and that the proposed establishment meets the needs of the community." Very important to understand the spirit of the ordinance and keep that at the forefront of things when considering her application. She recently opened up the Corner Cafe, and this is at 101 South Lafayette, doing well and serving coffee and sandwiches and ice cream. But as you probably know, 101 South Lafayette has had a difficult time over the years in terms of entities and establishments that have gone in there and had a difficult time surviving. And so what she has done and her aspirations are is to open up a wine bar in the evening hours. And this is something that, it's not just a unilateral thought that she has had, that she thought would best serve the community, but it's something that she feels truly would meet the needs of the community and serve a very important purpose in terms of what this community needs to bring a current to 2018. She's asked around, and this is a lot of feedback that she's gotten, that people are looking for in this community. They're looking for a wine bar, something, something different to offer to the community, something unique and fun, very current. And so that serves certainly the purpose of the community, and that is the reason for her application and what she is looking for. When you look at the ordinance, it's very specific in terms of it says that the factors that this council needs to consider are the review criteria, and that's in section 8-36. There's a lot of line items there, specifically there is 1 through 17. And it says that in the council's determination pursuant to the ordinance, the city may weigh or consider those factors. I'm certainly ready, willing, able, and prepared to go through each of those factors. And why, I feel that in the totality of those factors, they weigh in favor of getting the approval for her license. But rather than going through each of the factors, I think my time may be better well-spent, and I would be remiss if I didn't go over some of the things that need to be addressed tonight that we have seen in the packet that was presented to this council in the last couple of days, that may be weighing on you and may answer some of your questions in general. There was some, some feedback given to her in terms of the building department that are things that are going to need to be changed in this building. There was specifically, because if this, if you were to grant the liquor license, there's going to be more of a, a higher occupancy in that building, and it's going to require some renovations to the building, specifically in terms of bathrooms. I talked to Mr. Pike this morning, he was very, very knowledgeable, very welcoming in terms of what he had to say about it. And certainly, Ms. Bafano was willing to take on those types of renovations. There's also, there was a report given by the water department in terms of what it's going to cost to implement this liquor license, should it go through. And again, she's willing to take on whatever it takes in terms of the needs that need to be done to get this building where it needs to be for the liquor license. There was also some comments from Bob Donahue in terms of if this liquor license were to be granted, that this is an asset to the city that may not be, is used to attract other restaurants to the city going forward, and so there might be some hesitation in giving this liquor license up. On the same token, we believe that there also may be some fear that if someone were to be given this liquor license, that they could take it somewhere else. And there's probably no better person to give it to than someone who is a native to the community, local to the community, invested in the community, a business owner in the community, and willing to adhere to whatever comes to her plate in terms of getting this liquor license, making the changes that need to be made, and staying in the community and keeping this license within the community. So when you look at all those factors in general, specifically 8-36 of the ordinance, we feel that they weigh in favor of her application, and so we're asking for the approval of the liquor license.
Councilmember Presian, go ahead.
I have a quick question. Forgive me if I missed this in the packet, but has, will this affect the adjoining business, the connecting business?
We, no, we do not believe that it will.
Was Ms. French consulted? Okay, okay.
No, she was not, I mean, she was, she wa, I'm sorry, she was. She was consulted, and no, it will not affect the business.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, so just a couple of things, just from going through this package. And these, these are just minor things. What is the name of the company? Spelled four different ways in the, all the documents that are contained here. Okay? C-A-F-E, C-A-F-F-E, with or without the accent de U, French accent over the back. So the name is four different ways in this document. The, the other thing is, it requested three references, two were provided. The other thing noticing going through the package is the landlord for the building, I think, got taken for a ride because it shows that the annual rent is $2,600.
I actually noticed that myself.
So he, you know, he did a great job negotiating that. I assume that was probably $2,600 per month. And also understand that it's probably a $1,200 a month sublease for that glazy days that you received from them, and you subleased that to them, okay? So let me just share some of my concerns with this application. The concern I have is that this is the last Class C license the city has to offer for the next couple of years until the census is completed. It is far too valuable an asset to provide to such a small venue. The proposed plan seems to indicate you want out of the coffee shop business, since you'll be changing the hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, to be open from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM initially, and eventually 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So after four months as a coffee shop, we've decided we want to go towards being a land, a wine bar. This is after all the, all the advertising, all the publicizing that took place, all as far as, we're going to be there, we're meeting a need for the community, being open early at 6:00 AM, so people are headed out for work, we can meet their needs for an early coffee. And after four months, yeah, it's not working out the way we thought it would, let's change direction, add wine. The concern I have is that the establishment offers somewhere between 30 and 35 seats, depending on the number of people at the bistro tables, okay? And you elaborate these things to be a four, four-seat tables, four countertop seats, one six-seat table, two bistros, five soft seats, and four, four-set outside seasonal tables with 20 people. I'm not looking at the seasonal, I'm looking at what's inside. I compare that, and you also mentioned that we may possibly be adding entertainment in the future. So I look at, if you brought entertainment in, how would that further delete, you know, decrease the amount of seating within that establishment? And then I looked at the recommendations needed by the building department to add a second restroom, and what would that modernization do as far as decreasing seating as well? You look at the other businesses that we've provided Class C licenses to, Lake Street Tavern has four and a half times that seating capacity of your establishment. The South Lyon Hotel is 10 and a half times the seating capacity of your establishment. I have no problem with having a wine bar at that location. I have a problem granting our last full Class C license to that location. If you wanted to pursue getting a DDA Class C license for that location, I would encourage you to do so, and I would back that wholeheartedly, but not taking the last Class C license we have right now. That is for a larger venue- That is for a larger venue, in my opinion, to use as a larger draw to the city. Thirty seats in comparison, and while I appreciate the fact it's a quieter environment and the rest of that, doesn't compare with the other establishments and the value of that asset. We're going through what, what's been provided, I don't see any mention of expanding into the Glazier Days area, and I'm certainly not encouraging you to do so, it's a great business. Okay? So it doesn't provide any additional seating, at least I'm not finding it in the, the documentation here. It talks about, as I mentioned, the building officials saying we need to add an extra water closet and lavatory to meet the new and existing units would also have to be made vary or free to meet the ADA requirements. No cost estimated to do that, that requires somebody come in and design and see what the investment would be there. It was a $21,000 tap-in fee from the, the city for the extra water coming in there. The fire inspector identified a number of deficiencies relative to the property and specifically to Glazier Days, and we're, he's waiting to have those addressed here by the end of the, end of the month, not sure what the additional cost is for that, nor what progress has been made on addressing those. And again, that's a separate, separate issue. But bottom line, what I'm looking at is it's far too minimal as far as having a positive impact for the downtown. That's number eleven in the criteria. The amount to be invested in the proposed premises and establishment and the effect on the economic development of the city or the surrounding area, that's the prime criteria. Thirty seats does not make a major impact. No mention of adding additional employees. What I saw is, rather than adding additional employees and expanding the business, basically we're going to initially reduce operating hours by thirty-three percent, gradually raising it back up to just reduce it by twenty percent, and then sell the wine, that's going to increase the revenue for the, that location. Based on the concerns that I've, I've identified here and understand the fact that as the last Class C license, I'm looking for a larger venue, a larger draw to the city than just a thirty-seat operation on the corner. And again, I'm all in favor of you applying for and getting a DDA Class C license and would support that. But based on where we're at right now and what's being proposed, it's too small a venue for our last license, I wouldn't vote to approve it.
With all due respect, though, even a larger venue that could come in, if they were, if you thought that that would be more valuable or more worthy for this license, they may not be able to stick around due to other reasons. I mean, this is something she's bringing here, we think that it is of such a value because it is so unique. You need restaurants, and you need wine bars, and you need things to make sure that they're going to have longevity and stabilize and be a pinnacle in the community, not something that's here short-term and just goes somewhere else. And so that's the different, the unique perspective that we're trying to bring in to show that there is value there, and it is worthy of this license.
And I don't disagree with what you're saying, I disagree with how you want to satisfy that need. Because again, I look at the history. We operated the coffee shop for four months and decided, let's go a different route. So I look at how much upfront thought went into, let's open the coffee shop, and this is going to be a, a gangbuster business, and all of a sudden, let's do a different direction and go this way. I'm not willing to roll the dice with the, with the Class C liquor license based on that performance.
The applicant can address that a little more specifically.
Okay. Rhonda Bafano, 11310 Arrowhead. I did provide three references, two they could get a hold of, one they couldn't. So they're in there. We were not planning on shortening the business hours at all. We were still planning on being open at six AM, maybe serving, we were still planning on being open at six AM.
Okay, your hours show, operating, that's what it shows in the document, your hours being from 11 AM to, to nine PM, and then from 11 AM to 11 PM, once the license, I mean, that's what's in the document.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that.
So, I mean, feel free to look at it. But again, the real, the real basis is the impact on the city by granting that license. Thirty seats, when comparable businesses are 4.5X and 10.5X what that location is, that's what I'm looking for. And that's what I'm looking at when I look at giving that, granting that license and using that location to whomever it goes as a draw for this community. And, and I, I appreciate the wine bar, I think it's a great idea. I'd encourage you, you know, when you look at the, the investment that's required to do that, I think to get a DDA license requires about $100,000 investment, so that the, the applicant has some, if you will, some skin in the game in the development of their property in order to secure that license. I'd recommend that you pursue that avenue.
Isn't there risk involved if you granted to someone else a larger venue that were to come in? If you were to grant it to them, couldn't they take that somewhere else?
The same as she can, so.
That's true, but it's a calculated risk gamble, and that's part of our argument here, is that yes, it could be granted to a bigger venue, but there is also risk that they can just go somewhere else when you have someone that's here and invested and a native to the community and committed to the community. You're, you're, it's a calculated risk gamble, and there is, that's our value here and why we think we're, we're worthy of it and why we're doing this and, and pitching for this license.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Again, don't, don't take this, this is not a question of your worthiness for having this license, it is a question of the impact on the city. I am all in favor of you getting the DDA license to operate that wine bar. When you talk about the investment, she's already here. How much investment are we putting in that she could just close the door? I mean, worst-case scenario, I mean, you know, we decided we're not going to sell coffee, we're not going to focus on the coffee part of the operation after four months. So in four months, maybe, we say we're not going to, and I'm being facetious, we're not going to focus on the wine thing, and maybe I decide it's time to go somewhere else, and the license leaves with her at that point. Again, thirty-seat operation is not an impact of significance to this city to worth, in my opinion, to be worth granting that last license. I mean, that's where I'm coming back, it has nothing to do with the worthiness of the, of the, the venue, what you want to do with it. I just think it's a different license is where you should be, be headed toward, not the last full Class C license that we have.
Thank you.
And again, when I, when you say the other people could absolutely leave, they absolutely could. But before that license is given to them, they've come in and they're going to put probably several hundred thousand dollars into refurbishing an existing building here before they get that license. They have a lot of skin in the game, they have a lot of need to make that money back.
Well, she's going to have quite a bit of skin in the game, too. I mean, we saw the requirements from the building department on what it's going to require her to do. This is not going to be an easy task to take on.
And I understand that.
So it is going to be quite a big investment, you know, and, and risk on her part, and she's willing to, to do that.
And I commend her for it, I really do. Like I said, my opinion, and I'm just one of seven, the other license is more appropriate for this size venue.
Councilmember Presiden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to kind of pose this question out there. If we're, I understand both sides of the issue, however, if we don't grant this license to you, we're just going to sit and wait? And I thought the whole idea was to develop the downtown, was to bring in businesses and move it forward. And we don't have, as far as I know, we don't have any, anyone coming up who is willing to step forward with another business. I don't really know, I haven't spoken to Bob about this issue, full disclosure. I would love to hear Bob's opinion and know his, his take on this. So I would actually like to postpone it just so we could do a little bit more research. I didn't make it that far. But I would hate to sit on something and not have it used when we could give it to a valuable member of our community who has clearly made the risks, who's invested in our community. On the other hand, if there is something in the pipeline that's a little bit larger and a restaurant that is coming to town that we just don't know about, I would like to know that information. Because I think Councilmember Kennedy brings up some very valuable points. Everything he said was spot-on, his analysis was correct in every way. However, at the same time, I don't want to sit on something if it's not being used. Granted, it's our only one, but there's no, there's no telling when another business is going to pop up and say they're ready, they're coming to South Lyon, and we don't know what they're going to do with it. It's a, it's a risk either way. So I, I would like a little bit more time to look into this further. I don't want to tell you no because I don't think that's what you deserve right now.
Councilmember Kimmel, please.
Well, I, I think they've made an awful lot of good points, and I've been particularly pleased with the way you guys have embraced the coffee shop. I mean, there's a lot of foot traffic over there, you've clearly hit a, a really nice tone with the community. But I can't get past the idea that Bob has, he routinely, we talk quite often, and he's got a line of people that are restaurateurs. Their only obstacle is trying to find the facility to host a restaurant. So, and earlier in the meeting, you had seen where the conflict with Bonner's two buildings. I mean, those are being sought after hotly. So the idea of getting them off the dime to commit to something which we're all saying, just sell the thing, sell it for a reasonable price, and somebody will turn that into a gem. But the idea of waiting, allowing you to take that license that is only going to use the smallest portion of a quota license that has the full breadth of what you can get from a liquor license, and you want to sell wine in a very small venue, where we're stuck for a minimum of two years by the time the census comes out, and then we're reallocated another quota license. I think that gives us a substantial vulnerability that I really don't want to end up being stuck saying, trying to explain to somebody, this building came available and now will entertain you coming in if you can find one on the open market that'll satisfy the scope of what your project will be, knowing that your project is, is very narrow in what your, the license will be applied to. I agree with, with Mary's idea of us having, having some time to really flesh out a little bit more detail and, and potential, both from what Bob's candidates are, are looking like and what their timelines might end up being. Because I think that that weighs, that'll weigh heavily on my being able to move one way or another, so.
Councilmember Walton, please.
Can I just ask, if I recall correctly, the original business model included a wine bar in this building and not just a coffee shop?
When I opened the business in May, my thought was to go to that process. It wasn't, we started in coffee and then changed our mind. And as a matter of fact, I, in May, wanted to come to council and apply at that point, but there was the, the ordinance that was being discussed at that time. So that's why it's taken so long to get to this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Presiden, go ahead.
So I would just make the proposal that if, if we can, there's a few questions that are still outlining the, the correct name of the, the business, the correct hours, because it does say Sunday through Saturday, 11 AM. So if we could just clear up a couple of things that are in the document that my council may have questions about, and then maybe just give us a, a month, thirty days? Because I, and this is just one council member speaking, so if you guys chime in if you're not, if you're opposed to the idea. But I would like to speak this, speak with Bob Donahue about this and flesh out the issues a little bit more.
Does anyone else have anything for the discussion?
I will make the motion that we bring this back in thirty days.
Well, or second meeting, or first meeting in?
Our first meeting in September, which would be September 10.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Anyone with anything on the budget this evening? Okay, that's great. We'll move on to the manager's report, Chief Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are moving along very well on the acquisition of the property located at 501 McMunn. We have given the earnest money check to Mr. Allen for $22,500, and he will be depositing that with the title company that we have selected, which is Liberty Title in Brighton. The city is moving forward with our due diligence, and we have authorized Asti Environmental to begin a Phase One environmental site assessment and an ACM inspection, which is for asbestos. We've also arranged for a building inspection tomorrow, and I believe the Asti representatives will be meeting the city building inspectors on-site to begin their process. And I am in the process of getting quotes from various survey companies to select a Item number two, the city has received a check, a revenue-sharing check, from the Resource Recovery Recycling Authority of Southeast Oakland County, affectionately known as RASOC. The check was in the amount of $1,803.15. Additional income for the city came from Mr. Greg Ashman of B&amp;M Ashman Incorporated, associated with the Comcast project up in Trotters Point. We had billed Corner Cable and by default, B&amp;M Ashman, $5,944.39 for labor and equipment costs associated with repairs to a severed water sewer, water service line at 1128 quilt. So the city has been made whole on that, the check was given to the treasurer's office. And my final item is a plea on behalf of the Pumpkinfest Committee. They are in dire need of volunteers. Normally, at this time of year, they would have eighty percent or more of their, their volunteer slots filled. They are nowhere near that at this point. They especially need volunteers for setup during the day on Friday, first day of Pumpkinfest, and they need help in the beer tent on Friday and Saturday night. So they're pleading for help to be able to keep the beer tent running. They're saying informally that if the beer tent doesn't keep running, the festival may not keep running, because that is a big source of income for the Pumpkinfest. So if any of our citizens would like to contribute to or give back a little to our community and get a free T-shirt, you can look and actually sign up to volunteer on the Pumpkinfest website at www.southlyonpumpkinfest.com. That's it for our report, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I just would like to, to highlight for the benefit of the, the public, if Chief Vogel would share the information that he put in the weekly report here regarding the automated resuscitation equipment that's being sought by the fire department.
Yeah, we submitted a grant with Firehouse Subs, and it's, it ends August 30th, I hope to hear something in September. It's about a $15,000 device, it's a high priority for the fire department right now.
And for those who may not be familiar with it, this was highlighted on the Hometown Life website.
Yeah, Lyon Township bought three of these. Green Oak Township received a grant for two.
Okay.
It became pretty highlighted last week when they had a house fire in Green Oak, and both their devices were, ended up at the scene, and then we got called for a CPR in Green Oak, and we didn't have a device and theirs was tied up. And it was limited man firefighter, so it would have been, I made it the high priority after that, so. We do about 25 CPRs so far this year, and I believe that we'd have a higher success rate of saves with this device, so.
I commend you on your efforts, and certainly hope to hear favorable results here in a couple of weeks. Thanks, Chief.
Councilmember Kurzweil.
Yeah, I had two items. Wanted to ask about Heinemann Engineering, what is going on over there? I noticed that they're doing a, they have a dewatering system over there. I've seen them on construction sites, and I thought, I could be wrong, but I thought that South Lyon had engineering standards that required dewatering systems to go through our city engineer. Has anybody looked at that dewatering system? Does anybody know what's going on over there?
I know what's going on.
Well, here, here's why you permit dewatering systems. I worked for a period of time for an insurance defense firm and did environmental law. When you dewater anything, you have to look at the area that you're around. And so I went down, I took a look at the area, did not want to approach Mr. Heinemann, you know, I just, but I did take a look at what was going on by walking on the sidewalks. And across the street, you have Mo's Garage, and next door, you have a gas station. And generally, what you have, when you have contaminants in both of those businesses, is that you have migration of contaminants. is that you have migration of contaminants over time or leaching in the property. So, the first question that I would like to know is whether or not any contaminants from Mo's or from the gas station next door have leached into the water that he is removing from the ground. It's my understanding, when I try to do my research on this, is that there are some monitoring heads that are in that area. So, there must be some kind of contamination in that area that's being monitored. So, even though he's on private property, I think he's still under the engineering standards, may have been required to have HRC take a look at the system he's using. So, why is this important? This is important because when material migrates through the soil and you get near water, you then have to look at the weight of the contaminant. And in this case, if you have gas, gas is lighter than water. So, gas will travel on that vein of water as it goes wherever, in your plume or wherever that water is traveling. So, the next question is, is if there were contaminants, have the contaminants leached to where he is dewatering, and is the water contaminated that he is pumping into the city sewer system? So, has anybody, am I the only one that caught this? Okay.
Did you notice is that manhole, a storm sewer, or...
I think it's a storm sewer.
Yeah, okay.
I did not want to lift anything, any product that he had there.
Sure.
But it's clear water was going into something that was draining. I assumed it was our water system.
I didn't know if it was sanitary or...
Yeah, so, I mean, that's all I'm saying is, is maybe we should take some steps and take a look at this, and maybe stop and see him tomorrow and just say, "Hey, whatever you're doing, you're stuck," because there's water all over that place. So, I don't know how much water he's pulling out, how deep he's pulling the water out. I think our aquifer is, I don't know, 150 feet or something? So, I don't know how far he's going down and pulling water out. I don't know. I don't know. I just have a lot of questions. It may be nothing, but I think that whenever you see people dewatering, you have to ask yourself, "What's the quality of the water that you're pulling out of the ground and pumping back into the city system?" They're just questions, so that's really the only question I had.
Councilmember Kurzweil, I think Councilmember Richards had something to maybe add to that. Did you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Kurzweil, the situation you're referring to and everything, I have studied it, okay, over the last week or so, and your concerns are well put. And the water is going from the aquifer into our storm sewer system, and that does go into Yerkes Drain, and the wells are down there, I would say 10 feet, okay? And it's a sucking generator that's sucking it out of the ground because, the reason is, they couldn't keep, they dug the hole to get the peat out, and they couldn't get the, finish getting the peat out because they couldn't hold the hole. There was too much water. When Rose dug the hole, the second excavator, he said, "I gotta fill it in. There's too much water here. We gotta do something else," okay? And so, that's what they did, and then they decided to start pumping it. And I've told them personally, of course, I wasn't, they weren't very friendly to me. I don't think this is ever going to dry up because there's too, you're into the aquifer, and that water does smell. But whether that's contaminated in the water or just a reaction, a chemical reaction with the asphalt on our 390 lot yet, I don't know. But, no, that, they can't pour cement base for that red...
For the collar.
The red thing that's supposed to go underground, you can't, unless you can sink a precast piece of concrete with a crane in there, and it would be approved by the Building Commission as a suitable base. I don't, I don't, you can't mix cement and pour it in that hole. That's what it amounts to, okay? I've talked to the Building Department about it. He says, "Leave well enough alone, Carl. Tell, you know, something happens." Well, I said, "What if the sidewalk falls in? We're tampering with the underground water table here." They just said, "Leave it alone, Carl." So, that's where it is, Maggie.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kurzweil, did you have another comment?
Well, I don't, I don't know if he's reaching that far down to the aquifer, because if you look at what he's doing, he has, that red pipe there is the collar. That's a collar. That's what they want to do. They want to take that red piece of piping, which is huge, they want to put that in the ground, and that's where the Christmas tree's going to go. So, I don't think they're reaching the aquifer, because I think our aquifer is deeper than where he's drilling. He's at, he's, he's above the aquifer. I just...
That's just groundwater.
That's just groundwater.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. You're near, you're near two places where there are levels of contamination, the gas station and Mo's across the street. I don't know.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anything else on the manager's report?
You know, I'd like to ask, could you just reach out to the Drain Commission and see if they might have an interest in taking a look at that? I mean, if there's going to be tainted water put in the Yerkes, they need to be held responsible for it, so.
Call HRC.
I've already noted to speak to HRC and the Building Department. Mr. Mayor, I'll simply add the Drain Resources Commissioner, Water Resources Commissioner.
Thank you, Chief. All right, at this time, we'll open up our second public comment. Quick reminder of the rules. Members of the public may speak at the council meeting upon recognition by the mayor. Public comment may only occur during periods designated on the agenda for a public comment for a public hearing. A person may speak for up to two minutes during each of the two public comment periods. On agenda items or non-agenda items, waivers of the time requirement may only be granted in the discretion of the mayor, and waivers to speak at a time other than the designated comment period may only be granted by the council. Any person wishing to make a presentation longer than two minutes or requiring audio, video, visual equipment is asked to contact the city clerk requesting to appear on a future agenda. Person may only address the council from the podium. Only one person may occupy the podium at a time. All remarks are to be directed to the mayor and council. Speakers are not to engage in direct dialogue with other meeting attendees. Any person who violates these rules of conduct, disturbs the peace and/or meeting, and/or interferes with the meeting may be warned, ordered to be seated, removed, and/or ticketed. This summarizes Council Resolution 04-18. Complete rules, including the guidelines for considering waivers, are available in the council chambers and from the city clerk. Thank you.
Ryan Lehrer, 701 Sixth Grand Court. Carl, I was highly offended at your comment tonight regarding the trailer park comment. You really need to apologize to the American people and to the country for the people that do not have, you are very aware of your past history of where you have lived and where you've come from, that you have been without certain things throughout your life. And the people over at the trailer park are not all trailer trash. There are good people over there. There are issues. Everybody knows there's issues, but that's not the point. The point is, is people live there, and we need to respect everybody and give them a chance and not use racial comments during public meetings. And I have tried to tell you this in private, and you kind of blow me off and don't take me seriously. Well, tonight, I had to bring it up in public because you really need to apologize. The other comment I would like to address is, while I was at the Blues Brews and Brats volunteering, I was made aware that you, Steve Kennedy, had a conversation with one of the potential city manager candidates, and I was just made aware tonight, or this afternoon, due to the Oakland Press, that one of the candidates have dropped out, so now it only goes to Paul or Tracy. I, I'm assuming Tracy's watching these videos, and I don't believe that she's had an opportunity to speak with anyone on council regarding her interviews. I would like you to address this, if you can, during your public comment regarding your conversation with Paul, and disclose to the American people so that we have a fair and honest procedure regarding the selection of our next city manager. Thank you.
We'll close public comment and move on to council comments. Councilmember Richards, we'll start with you this evening.
Okay, I'm, if I ever made a mistake in talking about mentioning a trailer park, it was in a, I think I said South Lion Woods, and it was in reference to size of square footage of living quarters. I wasn't trying to insult anybody or anything. I just chose that article to make a comparison because I was trying to make a point, and certainly not my intention to offend anyone. That's all I can say, really. I just, yeah, I'm sorry if I offended anybody. It certainly wasn't my intention. Okay, moving on here. I'd like to make note that our post office uptown did a fantastic job of paving the parking lot here about two weeks ago, and nothing was mentioned about it. I was going to, but I couldn't get to it, and it's absolutely wonderful, okay? And I tried to find out how much it cost, but I wasn't able to do so. They didn't tell me. And also, right next door, our DPW did a marvelous repair on Wells Street, right all the way across it, okay? I was blocking it off for a little while, but I'm sure everybody was, went along with it very well, and they also repaired the approach at the corner of Wells and Liberty. And also, I'd like to just mention a business in town that doesn't get much publicity. The Wendy's fast food restaurant there, right next to Bill Wipert and next to the Act of Faith property, they have a new manager that's in the property, and she seemed very agreeable and was glad to see me. I told her I don't come here very often, and she asked me a question, how to, she wanted to participate in the Pumpkin Fest parade, and I told her, "Well, it's a committee, and you can find out at City Hall how to contact them and one thing or another." And I'd like to applaud the business for their dedication to seniors. There's a lot of seniors that live in this town that go there, and they find a place to be to themselves, I guess, and where they feel accepted, and a lot of them come from our housing project, the city's housing project, right up the street on the other side of Act of Faith. And they have a dedication to the seniors. She invited me to come more often and offered to give me a free combo. Well, I declined. I'm not a combo eater. But anyway, I thought I'd mention it because Wendy's is a marvelous business, really, in this town, and they deserve to get mentioned once in a while. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of quick things tonight. Blues Brews and Brats was an excellent time. I know that there was several of us council members, four to be exact, there throughout the day, working in the chamber. Did want to highlight, just say thank you, how nice it was having us there, and I just want to thank them for putting on such a good event. Also, to congratulate you on your recent wedding and marriage.
Oh, yeah.
To many years to come, to you and marriage.
Thank you.
And that's it. Have everyone have a great night.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say to everybody who worked the polls on Election Day and the primaries, I just wanted to say that it was just great. I was with a lot of contested individuals from different sides, and I do want to report, every one of us got along extremely well. There were people that were up from Ohio that were working polls for certain candidates. It was wonderful to see people getting along regardless of the political party that they were affiliated with. I was in Lion Township in Novi, I was in Milford, in Commerce Township in South Lion, and I particularly want to thank the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. When I saw them over in Lion Township, they were actually out at the polls in the parking lot, and I thought that was just a great community touch that they had, is that they were out there greening people coming in. They weren't there long, but they would periodically come out and sort of say hello to people, and I thought that was just great community relations. I know the voters appreciated it. That was also being done in Novi. Lisa, I do want to, well, I want to bring to the public's attention is that, has there been any other discussion or follow-up on the gentleman who stole the ballot on primary day? At all?
My workers don't remember his last name.
Don't, do they remember his first name?
I don't think so. They were very flustered.
I can understand why.
They're very flustered.
I can understand why. There was a ballot that was stolen, and somebody came in and gave the workers, obviously, a hard time. I do want to raise the issue that this potentially could be a beginning stage for Antifa, and I did have an opportunity to speak with the Oakland County Sheriff about Antifa. They, I know that they're active in Ann Arbor, and I know that they're becoming active in Oakland County. Somebody could have been coming in and checking to see what our security systems were, how well we were staffed, and this may have been a dry run. So, I would encourage those that are involved in the election process in November, if the primary is any indication, this will be a very, very active election season in the midterms, that I would encourage everyone to sit down and come up with a plan on how belligerent voters should be treated when they are intimidating and harassing poll workers, and would like to know if a picture can be somehow drawn by an artist of this gentleman. It shouldn't be that hard. He ran in the area, so I doubt whether his car was nearby. He may, he may live in this precinct. So, if we could have an artist draw a picture and take an active approach on this, I'm sure we have somebody on the Culture Arts Commission that could help out. But this is very, very disturbing to everybody that heard this. I don't know if it is a crime to steal a ballot. I would think that maybe it is. I don't know what his intentions were, but clearly that conduct should have been resolved immediately, but it wasn't. So, I think we need to take a look at some precautions there. Next, I'd like to say, I'd like to agree with Councilwoman Walton. I also was at Blues Brews and Brats. I never laughed so much in my whole life. I must have laughed for nine hours. Our former city manager was there, and she was working the front with us. I saw so many people that were coming in from all over the area. It was super to see everybody. We just had a great time, and of course, the weather was incredible. Next, I wanted to, we have congratulated Mayor Pelchat on his marriage, but we also need to congratulate Melinda Pelchat on the marriage too, because now she is our new First Lady, and we do have some great First Ladies that we've had in the city of South Lion. Andrea Potter was just absolutely wonderful. She got out in the community and supported Jeff when he was mayor. Additionally, Megan Doyle was very active at the time. John was mayor. She had young children, and she was very active in the community. So, I think you have some good role models. We're looking forward to you being our First Lady, and it wouldn't be a congratulations without including you. So, to our new First Lady of South Lion. Congratulations. And last, I'm working on a project, a landscaping project, and I heard tonight about wildlife, and part of the design for this project is to include habitat for pollinators, and I know it sounds a little strange, but believe it or not, bees are becoming extinct. And if you're not aware of what bees do to your life and how they enhance your everyday life, including the food that you eat, please take a moment to Google extinct pollinators, and I am designing a fairly large landscape project that includes various pollinating plants in order to accommodate the extingness that is beginning to occur with not only monarch butterflies, but with the pollinators. So, thank you, everybody, for watching tonight's meeting. Have a great week. Thank you for inviting us into your home, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Okay, thanks. While volunteering at the Blues Brews and Brats event, I was encountered by one of the city manager candidates. I welcomed the candidate to the event. The discussion that ensued was non-substantive in nature, in an extremely public setting, where nothing confidential or of any consequence was discussed with the candidate, and nothing improper occurred. On another subject, I'd like to talk about the events down at the Salem-South Lion District Library. On July 25th and again on July 31st, it was... On July 25th and again on July 31st, it was discovered that someone dug up and stole a number of flowers from the gardens at the Salem-South Lyon District Library. The incident was reported to the Michigan State Police, who have jurisdiction at that location, and is currently under investigation. Over twenty plants were stolen with an estimated value of over three hundred and fifty dollars. And I'll probably butcher the names, but the gardeners probably have some ideas to what these flowers were. Butterfly bush, echinacea, and phlox, among others. The flowers were paid for by the Friends of the Library through fundraisers and donations, and the gardens are planted and tended by, and tended by over thirty volunteers. Every gardener knows the amount of time and effort that goes into developing and maintaining gardens like this. Hopefully, the individual or individuals responsible will be identified and held accountable. This brings me to my next announcement, that the Friends of the Salem-South Lyon District Library are sponsoring a gigantic book sale to raise funds for the library. It'll be held from Tuesday, August 21st through Saturday, August 25th. The Tuesday to Thursday hours are nine to nine. Friday and Saturday are ten to five. On Saturday, there'll be a book bag sale of five dollars per bag for the books that you select, and any remaining books are free on the following Monday, August 27th. So I would encourage you to come, stop by the library, and support the efforts of the Friends of the Library as they work to raise funds for this wonderful institution and hopefully replace the items that were lost over the past couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Presley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Thank you to Ms. Salome for volunteering again. That is incredibly important. At every meeting, I make a point to say the same thing, and I'm a broken record, I know that, but it does really mean a lot to the community to have volunteers like you, so thank you. With that being said, if you know anyone in the community who's willing to volunteer, we still need boards and commissions filled, so, and including Pumpkin Fest, which Chief Collins just mentioned earlier. These events aren't possible without the help of the people around us with our community help as well. So if you know anyone, spread the word. September 8th is a big day for two reasons. Depot Day, mark your calendars, and also, in my opinion, the best 5K around, which is, which is Hat Run. So it's less than a month away. Mark your calendars, sign up, which is Hat Run, September 8th, and Depot Day is an all-day event, I believe. Also, August 22nd at 6:30 is the second-to-last Lake Street Cruisin'. Mark your calendars for that, and I think that's all I have. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Kibble?
Steve had made mention about the gigantic book sale, and that they had a post on Facebook about that, and I just couldn't help myself because I commented to them, how many gigantic books do you have?
Oh, indeed.
So the Blues Brews and Brats has already been spoken to. It was a terrific event. We had wonderful weather, weather that was very conducive to enjoying beverages and some great bands. So that worked out really well. Everybody pitched in to set things up, break things down, and things worked out really well. So we had good fortune with that. There's a, the bridge that's over at Yurkey's Drain, the walking bridge that is on the east side of the street, that hand, the handrails on that thing are in really bad shape, and I don't know if that is associated with that, the oil change place, or if that is something that we are responsible for. So if there's any chance we could find out who has authority of that, it'd be nice to see that thing dolled up a little bit. Just a short one, the Whipple Street Block Party was on Saturday, and it was another great time. That's a, just a really lovely little neighborhood. I mean, my daughter's living on there, so it was nice for her to have the first shot at the Whipple Street Block Party. Bunch of nice families, and they're all very well organized, so that's really all I have tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. I just got two things. I definitely want to remind everyone, just think about how important Pumpkin Fest is in this community, and if they're reaching out to us desperate for volunteers, we don't want to lose any of the things that we've built this up to in this community. So I would tell you, it's a great event, obviously, but volunteering in this community is great, too, because you get to meet great people, and it's a lot of fun. It really is. So if you're around that weekend, and you're even thinking about it, reach out, talk to someone over at Pumpkin Fest, you know, even if you maybe have to leave early or whatever, you know, they're very concerned about it, which makes me very concerned about it. So I will keep ringing that bell until we get there. I also want to thank everyone for the well wishes this week. It was an awesome day, and that's all I got for us tonight.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.